I'm calling the city council, regular city council meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz. Oh, he's here. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. James, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. When taken under guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. I know it's not on the agenda, but a real quick tip of the hat or congratulations. Our, the sheriff substation had a dedication this morning for the American flag, the new flagpole. I don't know if you're all aware of that, but James Freihoff came and participated and he was the one that got the whole thing started along with the dedication of the landscaping. So that was very nice. Okay, we are for the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes that they'd like to make? If not, the agenda stands approved as submitted. We have no presentations this evening. Public communications will start at 7:30. I even set an alarm, Suza, on my cellphone to remind me in case we get carried away on something. We'll try to work our way around that. So that brings us to consent calendar. Does anybody have any items they wish to pull? If not, we have a motion for approval.
Move to approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, a second?
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Hearing none, so, so ordered. Okay, that takes us to, I gotta turn the page. Item two, the public hearing. James, would you like to introduce the topic before we?
Sure, sure. And we'll keep it very brief. The, it's just a high level overview of the reach code ordinance. Let me see, I'm pulling it up. And we tried to keep it very simple and I think we've talked about this the last couple of council meetings, but just for, as a reminder and for the public, a reach code is an ordinance that requires that newly constructed residential or non-residential buildings and/or related outbuilding structures and equipment be built all-electric. Otherwise, without gas, is what they mean by all-electric. We've discussed this the last couple of meetings. City council on the 13th directed staff to draft an ordinance based on the discussion. We did so on October 27th, that ordinance was introduced. The ordinance includes exemptions and exceptions that were discussed at those two meetings. And the, this is, again, trying to keep it very simple. This is the list of exemptions and exceptions. Temporary buildings such as construction trailers, attached ADUs, freestanding ADUs if an upgraded panel is necessary, an emergency generator powered by natural gas, an affordable housing project, and that's as defined by the state, a 55-year covenant restricted affordable housing project. Pace projects, which is a property assessed clean energy project. Remodels or modifications to properties that received certificate of occupancy prior to January 1st. And that's because that's when we estimate that the ordinance would go into effect and be approved. And then that next bullet should have been removed and replaced with the two below it, which is new restaurants and pool heaters. And then finally, there's a hardship or infeasibility exception as well for that, you know, could be applied if needed. And then I think one of the critical points to discuss today is at the last meeting, we talked about the appeals process and council discussed several options. So we've left that blank. It can be filled in and adopted, but what we recommended in the staff report and what we're proposing is identifying the community development manager as the person responsible. They would approve or deny exemptions through the zone clearance process so that the applicant gets an answer early on and knows what, what their options are or if they'll, if they'll be able to have gas or electric. Or, you know, they'll always have electric, but they'll be able to have gas. And then staff proposes that appeals will then proceed directly to the city council. The biggest negative with that is that the appeals do take, you know, would take meeting time. However, we, we don't anticipate very many appeals, so it would likely be, you know, one to two a year and I think relatively quick at those times. So with that, council can choose to accept that recommendation, fill in the blanks and then, you know, adopt that ordinance or they can determine an alternative and fill in the blanks accordingly there as well. So I think the exemptions in the appeals process are probably the, the two things we, we would discuss at this point. But with that, the ordinance is in your, in your packet and before you, and I know we had a public comment as well, so I will, that's the, the general overview.
Okay, by, for the benefit of the audience and the council, the procedure will be the council now has an opportunity to ask any questions they may have of staff. And when those questions, that's without getting into the deliberation, then we will open the hearing and take testimony from the public. And when that concludes, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Council will then proceed to whatever discussion that they feel is appropriate and, and then we'll approve or disapprove. So let's start with the questions. I see one hand. Suza, do you have a question?
I just want to be clear, whatever we decide tonight is with, with the understanding that this comes back in six months.
I think that was whatever, that was, that's what Ryan requested. I don't know that that needs to necessarily be, you know, will be part of the, certainly of the ordnance, out of the ordinance, but frankly, you can bring it back every six months forever if you wish. Just, you know, we know if they're on, I mean, the city attorney's got his hand up. Matt, you answer it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's in the draft ordinance based on the motion that was approved last time is in the final section, section eight, a six-month review. It does not render it ineffective. It means the council gets a chance to talk about the ordinance and make any changes so desired, but it, it's not an expiration date. It's a discussion.
Okay, so it gives, it makes a commitment to the public.
That's what I meant.
That's what you were looking for, wasn't it, Ryan? A commitment to be sure we come back and we don't want any unintended consequences. Bill's hands up, Bill.
And, and just to be precise about that, Mr. Summers, six months from effective date, so that's six months, which would be 30 days after the vote to approve the second reading.
Correct. So to put it in concrete terms, if the council so acted tonight to adopt the ordinance, then it would be 30 days from now, December 10th, when it takes effect. Then six months hence, so that'd be about June 10th and then whatever the next council meeting is after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ryan, Randy, you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, Matt, Matt answered my questions. I want, I was just ensuring that if it passes tonight, it's considered the second reading and then 30 days hence it'll become policy.
Right, okay. And then in six months, council is, it would be committing to review and
Right.
take further testimony on how well it's working. Okay, with that, I guess we're ready to open up the public hearing, is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, that would be normal.
Okay, well, the drop of the gavel. The public hearing is now open. If the clerk will start introducing people from the waiting room and allow them to tell the council what they think.
Okay, and also, we have all of the members of the climate committee available if you have any questions for any of them.
Okay. Do we have a question of the committee before we start?
Not, not a question for the committee, but a question for you. How many people do we have calling in?
15.
15. Did we want to limit their comments to two minutes or do we want to reduce it based on, I think there's going to be, just if there's going to be more on ATP and there might be more.
Yeah, I think, Gail, how many comments do we have on ATP?
Seven.
Okay.
So eight, we have eight now.
I would support staying with three, if that's okay.
Yeah, we can get through both of them in about an hour and 15 minutes. That's a good point though, Randy, thank you. Suza, did you have?
Oh, I, I just want, I agree that we should give three minutes because we're in the midst of a great teachable moment. And I think we, we need to hear the public and people that are watching, I think, want to hear what the public has to say.
Okay.
A few minutes is great.
Okay, does anybody else want to weigh in on that? If not, we'll, we'll stay with the three minutes. But thank you, Randy, for bringing that up because that is something that we need with the Zoom. We can't look out at the audience and look at a stack of cards and know what our time management is, but we can get through 25, I'm sure. Okay, with that, Gail, would you kick things off for us?
Okay, the first person is Doreen Farr.
Okay, Deline, are you out there?
Doreen Farr might be on ATP.
Oh.
Oh.
I, I apologize, I guess I put the wrong number down, but I want to speak to ATP instead, please.
Okay, we'll shift, we'll shift you over to that. Gail, what else do you have?
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, let me mute her first. The next one is Kit Stoltz.
Okay, Kit, are you there? Kit, are you out there?
There we go. Kit, you should be able to go.
Yeah. Kit, you're ready, you on?
Let me try again. I'm, it's, it's, the software is misbehaving. It's, I'm clicking the allow to talk button and it's not working. Let me talk to James Hahn one moment.
I like being in the board of supervisors sharing room this morning.
Maybe we could ask Gail to do the next two or three so people could be ready.
What she's saying that the problem is, is the waiting room, she has to be able to get, get the mute turned off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but I mean, after we resolve that.
Okay, we figured it out. It's the, the, I'm going to promote this speaker to panelists. It's because Kit is using an old version of Zoom, so.
Okay.
Kit, go ahead, you should be able to speak now.
Kit, are you there? Kit is still using an even older version.
There we go. Can he hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, welcome.
Hi, Kit, hi.
Hi. Thank you. I will be as quick as possible. Well, as you know, I'm speaking for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We were founded basically back after An Inconvenient Truth to Combat Climate Change. I'll note just briefly, about that same time, back in 2006, under Governor Schwarzenegger, the state passed AB 32, which was a pretty dramatic attempt to reduce emissions to 1990 levels. At that time, business interests said that it would be disastrous in various ways. It would lead to rolling blackouts, soaring costs, and would be a so-called job killer. In fact, it has not been any of those, none of those problems have come along. Our, this state set a remarkable standard, reducing, reaching, reaching those 1990 levels by 2016, four years ahead of schedule. We are nearly at 50% renewable energy. And this idea, modest in comparison, is an attempt to extend that basic principle of electrification and reduction of, you know, greenhouse gas emissions to the home. And I just think it's, you know, we think it's a very good idea. There's a great deal of research backing it up, both from the state of California, from the Energy Information Agency, which points out that California per capita is the fourth lowest consumer, despite the fact that we are an enormous state and, you know, use more energy total than anybody else. I also think it's important to mention that, you know, according to the Rocky Mountain Institute and the state of California and numerous others, all-electric homes are actually cheaper to install, according to a 2018 white paper from the Rocky Mountain Institute, quote, let's see if I can find it, "The mixed-fuel home, i.e. with gas furnace, water heater, air conditioning, new gas connection costs, has a higher upfront home cost than the all-electric home." Well, why is it? Basically, it's not very complicated. An all-electric home means using a whole-house heat pump, which eliminates the separate cost of a gas furnace. There's also a lot of interest and research around induction stoves, the replacement, the common replacement these days for gas stoves. And the city of San Jose has this interesting program to encourage use by allowing residents to rent a portable induction unit to try it out. And they report, quote, "They heat twice as fast than gas, have a better temperature control, and improve air quality in the home." There's really a lot of evidence for this program. And finally, am I, am I done?
Your time is up, but is it a quick come? Okay.
Last point, we are trying as a, as a state, as a nation, as a, you know, a species, to avoid what scientists call the higher warming scenario, which would be truly disastrous. And this effort, the all-electric home, is a small but vital step towards a safer world.
Okay, thank you, Kit, appreciate it. Gail, next speaker is?
May I just add that I sent the council the, the report from the Rocky Mountain Institute. You should have seen it, yeah.
That was very interesting. Gail, do you have somebody else for us?
Christopher Young, but, oh, there he goes. He's, Christopher, you should be able to speak now.
Chris, are you there?
I am.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. Truly a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak to you. I think I just have two quick thoughts to share. The first one is, if we, as a community, at this point, can't make this relatively minor move towards using less petroleum, the question that comes to me is, how in the world are we going to protect our children from climate change? I, I would be really surprised if any of you on the council have the sense that our community, our state, our nation are moving at anything other than a snail's pace as it relates to dealing with this existential crisis. So that's point one. Point two, and I'm not, I, I believe from what I read just recently on Facebook, I believe that councilmember Wyrick has brought forward the idea that maintaining gas piping is important regarding the future potential of using biogas and piping it, I guess, through, obviously through those same pipes. Again, given this snail's pace, that it appears we are moving at, towards doing much of anything about controlling out-of-control climate change, it's just, it's at least difficult, and I admit, I'm not knowledgeable in this area, but it is at least difficult for me to imagine that in the next 10 or 20 years, we are actually going to somehow be having biogas pumped into our homes. That, I, I think in some ways that would be very delightful, but, but I, I wonder about that. And I think, I think Kit and the, Kit Stoltz and the Green Coalition are on this. And so I support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Gail, the next speaker? Gail?
Oh, it's Scott Shell. Scott, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Scott, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much for, for having this hearing and for all the work you've all done. I think it's really important. I'm an architect and we've been designing all-electric buildings for our clients for a good while now and have found it very successful. I did look up the statistics today and in the last 10 years, almost 70% of homes that have been built have been built with electric heat. So I think the technology is there, it's mature, we're doing it. We've also been reading more and more recently about all of the health impacts of gas combustion in the home. And, you know, your hot water heater, if it's gas, it has to have a flue going out of your house. Your gas fireplace has to have a flue going out of the house to remove the unsafe gases. A gas furnace has to have a flue going out of your house, but your gas stove doesn't. It does have a vent hood, but only about 25% of, of people use their vent hood because they're noisy and people just don't like them. And so it's really putting, putting these unsafe polluting gases inside the home. So we've gotten really concerned about that and about any kind of combustion inside the home. The other thing I just wanted to say is, some people are spreading misinformation about reliability issues. And they say, well, you know, we have power shut-off sometimes, or sometimes electric power goes out, we need our gas. But, you know, all modern gas appliances need electricity. They're required by code to have electronic ignition. You know, we don't have standing pilot lights anymore. It's not healthy, it's not legal. And so you have to have that electronic ignition to get it started. You know, in addition, your, your furnace has an electric fan, your dryer has an electric motor. The only exception is your gas cooktop. You can light a gas cooktop with a match. You can't light the stove with the match. So that's the only exception. So I don't think those reliability issues are really an issue. So thank you for considering this and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Scott, for the information. Gail, the next speaker?
Is Steve Quilisi.
Steve?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, you're welcome, Steve. You're on.
Thank you very much. I have two points. The briefing said that reach code is electrification of new construction. I think at the last meeting, councilmember Wyrick pointed out that the oft-mentioned 35 cities that have passed reach codes, only three or four, I think it was, had actually passed reach codes that read like this ordinance. Second, I'd like to read a letter that I sent you all this afternoon for the benefit of people that may be listening tonight. Excuse me. Dear Mayor and City Council members, as you know, and I'm speaking as a member of the public, though you'll infer something else perhaps from the letter. As you know, the Climate Emergency Committee briefed the Planning Commission on their reach code plan prior to briefing the city council. Mr. White stated the committee's goal as eliminating the use of natural gas in Ojai. I haven't looked at the transcript again, he may have put the word infrastructure in there as well. I asked if it was part of the committee's plan to force me as a homeowner to stop using my natural gas appliances. And he said no. I then asked how the committee expected to eliminate the use of natural gas without forcing me to stop using my natural gas appliances. And he answered, it's only a goal. So my question for the mayor and city council is, as you vote tonight to adopt the reach codes for Ojai, are you, one, making a merely symbolic statement with almost no effect on the use of natural gas in Ojai? Or, two, taking the first step enforcing me to stop using my natural gas appliances? If the latter, when do you plan to force me to stop using my natural gas appliances? And finally, do the citizens of Ojai have any say in this matter, other than waiting for the next city council election? Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Mayor Johnston, could I just, I guess, correct the record on that statement about representing what I said?
Yes, go ahead.
Just really quickly, Steve, if you're listening, my comment was the very small number of cities are the ones that have a blanket, a blanket ban without specific stipulations addressing possible unintended negative consequences. So what we have before us tonight is much more in the center average of what, much more common presentation of what's in those cities. So I wanted to correct the record a little bit of what I said.
Thank you, Bill.
I appreciate the correction and I stand corrected. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Gail, the next speaker?
The next speaker is Maria Ventura. Maria, you should be able to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome, Maria.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Maria Ventura and I'm commenting today on behalf of SoCal Gas. When I spoke at your last meeting, I shared information with you about SoCal Gas clean energy programs and our shared climate change goals. This past Friday, emailed you a letter offering additional details about our vision to be the cleanest gas utility in North America and clarifying certain inaccurate incomplete statements previously made about building emissions, natural gas and renewable gas. I hope you had an opportunity to review our comments. It's a lengthy letter, so I won't go over it all today. However, I do want to highlight six important points. Number one, comprehensive building emission reduction strategy, strategies were omitted from your consideration. Our letter includes a discussion of some proven cost-effective strategies such as energy efficiency, incentives and home weatherization. Two, renewable natural gas, or RNG for short, is already a part of SoCal Gas clean energy system. And experts agree it will, it is needed to help the state achieve carbon neutrality. RNG is currently the only carbon-negative fuel. And we have committed to replace 20% of our gas supplies with RNG by 2030. Three, SoCal Gas customers will soon have the option to purchase natural gas from renewable sources. Incorporating this into your reach code would provide residents the ability to maintain gas service while offsetting all, all proportion of emissions associated with their gas use, like they're really due for the electricity use. Four, building homes without gas service does not equate to decreased building cost. Many of the savings referenced by staff and the climate committee are incorrectly premised on building practices that are commonly used in the building industry. Five, proper ventilation is the only important component to protect indoor air quality. Cooking foods regardless of energy source generate certain emissions and is the charred of the food is the primary cause of emissions, not the type of heat source used. Properly maintained kitchen range hoods can effectively remove harmful emissions from cooking regardless of appliance type. Six, experts agree that mixed-feel buildings with both natural gas and electricity service are more resilient to extreme weather events and disasters. Redundant energy systems enable critical, critical services and facilities such as buses, hospitals and grocery stores to operate and save lives during climate events. We applaud Ojai's leadership and environmental progressive city and we support your overarching effort to find innovative ways to reduce emissions and create a more sustainable city. As a trusted, longtime energy provider in Ojai, we are committed to work with the city to achieve these goals. We hope the information we have provided you will help make a better informed decision about how to reduce emissions from buildings in your city. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important policy issue.
Thank you, Maria. Gail, the next speaker?
Is Andrew Ellison.
Okay, Andrew?
Good evening, council.
Yeah, welcome.
Hi, I want to congratulate this council for demonstrating vital leadership by recognizing the imminent existential threat that climate change poses to all of us and our children. And you rightly declared an emergency. You appointed competent people to a committee who have been working very hard to find tangible ways our community can immediately begin to reduce the damage we're inflicting on our climate. I know how these people are working, I'm married to one of them. I, I appreciate your thoughtful deliberation as this has gone on. But when I see the exemptions that have been proposed, it reminds me that we are not truly acting like this is an emergency. In a true emergency, we don't default to the status quo. I've been amused by some hand wringing about potentially losing access to beloved gas ranges, even among my climate-concerned friends. This reminds me of when electric cars became widely available only a couple of years ago. Electric vehicles are safer, quieter, more powerful, offer more control, cheaper to buy, feature for feature, after incentives. Much cheaper to own and operate over the life of the vehicle. Yet until people had actually driven one, they were sure their old gasser must still be better. We're in a similar place on the adoption curve regarding electric induction cooking ranges. Once people try cooking with induction, there's no going back. Chefs who earn their living in the kitchens are showing the way forward. Cooking like driving has evolved and most people just haven't experienced this yet. Similarly, modern electric heating is a superior alternative to gas furnace. When our family put in a high-efficiency mini-split air conditioner in our home, it came with a heat pump heater. This immediately proved a better, cheaper way to heat our house and we have removed the old furnace and haven't missed it. We haven't missed the carbon monoxide risk, the diminished indoor air quality, the fire risk, the heating. We haven't missed the carbon monoxide risk, the diminished indoor air quality, the fire risk, the heating bills. And I think the same goes for electric heat pumps for pools. So I'd also challenge you to reconsider the proposed exception you've carved out for ADUs. Any home with a 100-amp panel that is adding an ADU is almost certainly going to require a panel upgrade, especially if the ADU is going to be air-conditioned. And even if the panel upgrade doesn't happen when the ADU is built, it will be coming as the primary home adds electric vehicle charging, as most of us will soon, and/or when they learn that they'd actually prefer to be cooking with induction in the main house as well. When an ADU is added, the panel upgrade is going to happen regardless of whether gas appliances are also present. But the cost and the trouble of the additional plumbing of a gas main to the ADU and the plumbing of gas throughout the ADU does not have to happen. The homeowner can be spared the construction expense, the long-term risks, the operating costs, and they can be nudged into this carbon-free future. My concern is this exception for ADUs hazards swallowing the rule because we can project that as likely that the great majority of new construction in the coming years will be ADUs. So let's build them for the future, not tether them to this burning past.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate your remarks. Gail, the next speaker.
Is Laura Meisch. Laura, go ahead.
Laura?
Laura, unmute your mic, please.
Yep, I got it.
Great.
Oh, you got it? Okay, welcome, Laura.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'm gonna be an exception to the prior speakers. As we are local contractors, we were pretty shocked, first of all, that we'd only heard about this initiative through the paper last week. And it's already on the second reading. So we felt that this was really coming too fast and that there should be more public education and awareness made on this issue. I mean, we are builders in the valley for 30 years, plus we have a house currently in plan check that we had not heard anything about this initiative. So anyway, we just, again, feel it's very fast. Just in doing some research for our new home, we found that, for the most part, gas is still a preferred for efficiency and economic reasons, for gas dryers, for gas water heaters, and for heating larger homes, gas is still the preferred way to do it. So we felt that, let's see, that even though our project, I guess, will be exempt from this if you did pass it tonight, since we are already in plan check, we felt that perhaps the city could at least reach out to current buildable lot owners, because there is still a few in Ojai. Not too many, but there are some lots out there. And just make them aware of what's happening because I think it really impacts the value of the lot and what people perceive they can do with their property. And there's already so many requirements in building right now, just through the current code as far as the Title 24, the high-fire provisions that we now have to fall under, the earthquake structural, the landscaping requirements. There's so much on people to build these days that it's just amazing and how expensive it is. That's about all we wanted to say.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Laura. Gail, the next speaker.
The next speaker is Ruth Cooper.
Okay, Ruth.
One moment, this looks like the same problem before with the old software. Ruth? You should be able to speak? Oh, I'm going to promote her to panelist.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Does that come with a raise or just title?
Ruth, you should be able to speak now.
Got it. Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I just want to say that I really appreciate the Climate Emergency Committee and their work and
Ruth, can you speak up a little? I can't quite hear you.
Sure. I really appreciate the work that you all are doing to address climate change and I wanted to speak to a couple of things. One is, you know, Al Gore was right. This is a very inconvenient truth. It is going to be inconvenient. And, but, but we have to set that aside to some extent. And I agree with Mr. Ellison that the exceptions seem excessive, particularly the ones for ADUs, since Ojai is fairly built out and we don't expect a lot more building other than ADUs. So I would like to suggest that ADUs not be part of the exception and that remodels also be required to go all-electric. And I want to say that I feel like I know from where I speak because our family has gradually been converting to electric. We have an all-electric car which we charge at home. We put in a heat pump and we've experienced a hot summer and now some very cold weather and have been very comfortable and very happy with it. So our house is being heated and cooled electrically. And we look forward to replacing our water heater and our range as we have the ability to do so. We're a family of very modest means and we are making these changes even if it means that we have to refinance our house to do so. We feel that we all should be taking every step that we possibly can to address climate change so that we leave a livable planet for our children. This is not about saving, you know, $100 bucks here or $1,000 there. This is about providing a livable planet for our children. So I think we all need to keep that in mind and really understand that there are going to be difficulties. This is going to be inconvenient. But we have to remember what our mission is and I appreciate the council considering what would be best for future generations and not just the people who have the fortune, the good fortune to be on the planet right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail, the next speaker.
Is Dan Kegel. Dan, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Dan, you're welcome.
So my name is Dan Kegel. I am an engineer and a Sierra Club member, speaking to you from Los Angeles, which is considering a similar move. I use an induction cooktop. It's safer than my old gas stove and I find it faster and just as controllable. So, and it costs 50 bucks. It's not like this is rocket science anymore. Second, SoCal Gas claimed tonight that they will be able to meet 20% of demand with renewable natural gas by 2030. Well, first, a state report found that there isn't going to be enough biogas in the state of California to do that. They just can't scale it up. And second, the State Utility Commission's watchdog has proposed fining SoCal Gas $255 million this week for using ratepayer money to oppose actions like yours. Their credibility is limited. Third, we need to get to 100% renewable, not 20%. So while this motion is not pure enough to get to 100%, it's a great intermediate step and it's very similar to what the city of San Francisco passed tonight. That's a big vote of confidence for this approach and I urge you to approve. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Gail, the next.
Next, we have Michael Shapiro.
Michael, you're on. Michael?
Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself.
It's gonna be new in our dictionary. Welcome, Michael.
Great. Hello. Good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor. This is a great, a great step forward and we know that Ojai suffers from such a fragile air quality environment. We have to pull out all the stops, do what we can to make our community healthier. And frankly, you'll be joining some premier cities throughout the state that don't have the same kind of air quality challenges that we have. Santa Monica, Santa Cruz, Berkeley, Cupertino, Mill Valley, Palo Alto. Major cities have gone through this, studied really carefully and you know, some of those cities have some of the most brilliant scientists at their disposal and they know this is the way forward. So I really fully support it. I do have misgivings about too many exceptions. I think we should go all out, frankly. That's what I believe in. And when I went solar and my wife and I converted to all-electric cars, we were able to take advantage of federal estate rebates. My question, has the City Council looked into the possibility for people who want to convert all the way but have the expense of going from a gas appliance to a electric heater, heat pump, stove, whatever? Are there any rebates out there that would make that big nut a little, little less onerous to take on? I think, you know, confirming with our state representatives, our regional representatives to see if it's possible to plug into similar rebates that were available for solar insulation, electric car rebates, which are common now. I'd like to see if the City Council could look into something similar so that we as a community can make this transition and it'll be a little easier financially on all concerned. So other than that, it's a great program. I urge the City Council to move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, well, Michael, in answer to that last question, is that yes, the City Council and the Climate Committee are looking into that as far as exemptions, not exemptions, but subsidies. But that would be the next step. Right now, what is before us doesn't apply to anybody who currently is here and is enjoying whatever benefits they feel they're getting from the gas. They get to keep doing that. But at some point, creating incentives to move it further down the line, you make a good point and I'm sure we'll continue pursuing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Gail.
That's all the speakers that I have on the list who are in the queue. However, we have two people that are in the queue, but I don't have them listed as a particular item. So I'm gonna bring on the first person, Denise Grab, and ask her if she, if this is the item she wants to speak on.
Okay.
Are we gonna do public comments during some pause?
Yeah, we'll go right to public comment here shortly. The other person that's in waiting?
The other person is Dennis McCarthy. And here, Denise Grab, you should be able to speak. Did you want to speak on this item?
Yes, this item, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Denise Grab and I actually work at Rocky Mountain Institute of the aforementioned paper. I'm in the Oakland office there and we're, as you know, an independent nonprofit working to shift toward a low-carbon future. I grew up in SoCal, visiting Ojai on a number of weekends and I'm really grateful for all the city has done to move forward, being the first city in its county to declare a climate emergency, and for good reason. As we've seen the effects of climate change in Southern California, our action or inaction today will impact the livelihood of generations to come. And we don't have time to wait on climate change. If we continue to build mixed-fuel homes, we'll be locking in more carbon emissions for decades and increase the risk of stranded assets. Moreover, there are substantial health risks from gas appliance pollution, such as greater asthma risk from both indoor and outdoor pollution. The EPA has concluded that exposure to nitrogen dioxide from gas appliances causes respiratory harms and homes with gas stoves have 50 to 400% higher concentrations of nitrogen dioxide than homes with electric stoves. In fact, children living in homes with a gas stove are 42% more likely to experience asthma symptoms and 24% more likely to be diagnosed with asthma by a doctor in the first place compared to children living in homes with electric stoves. This pollution is preventable and we need to electrify our business, or sorry, our buildings. This is especially important today as we face a global pandemic that threatens our respiratory health. Emory University recently found that greater exposure to nitrogen dioxide leads to a greater likelihood of death from COVID-19. When considering the impact of the proposed ordinance and whether or not to continue putting gas in our homes, we need to consider that that lives will directly be impacted by these emissions. And in addition, as Kit Stolz mentioned, a report earlier found that all-electric new construction is actually cheaper than mixed-fuel construction. And Councilmember, I believe, Suzha, responded on that front. And we also support comments from Andrew Ellison and others in favor of limiting exemptions from the rule. We want to make sure that the policies here achieve the intended goal and not have the exception swallow the rule. Tonight, you have the opportunity to accelerate us to a safer, healthier, cleaner, all-electric future. I ask the City Council to pass the proposed ordinance for all-electric new construction to improve the livelihood of Ojai's residents today and in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your consideration.
Thank you, Denise. Gail, do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
There's one more speaker that I don't have identified which, as to which item, and it's Dennis McCarthy. So I'll go ahead and put him on and see if this is the item he wants to speak on. If that's okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Dennis, go ahead. Dennis, if you could unmute yourself. One more time.
He's ATP.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're done. There's no more speakers.
Okay, well, that will conclude the, the public hearing then. I'm gonna close the public hearing, but then with the council's agreement, we can take a break. And we have, I think, one person that's waiting to make a public communication. It was at 7:30, okay?
I agree, it's time for the public communication.
Okay, I declare the public hearing to be closed. And, Gail, we will now go to public comment or communications. And you have somebody that would like to speak to us?
Yes, we have Chelsea Setula. Chelsea, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Hi, Chelsea. Welcome.
Hi. Hi there. Oh, God, I gotta get myself up. Oh, no. There we go. I was on twice as a backup. Okay. So I'm, I wanna just make sure council understands the impacts of Measure G on cannabis dispensaries because I don't think it's been adequately reported. I don't think that Ojai Valley News did the community a service when they fully endorsed this measure without actually speaking to dispensary owners about how this would impact our business. 3% of gross receipts probably sounds like a tiny drop in the bucket for cannabis dispensary and most of your minds. That's understandable. Everybody thinks there's just dollars, dollars. We're a big piggy bank. And I know the city needs money right now. But 3% of gross receipts year-to-date, 2020, would have been 76% of our annual net income. So I want to let that set in and I hope you all hear me. Because that is not fair. I don't think any of the business owners on council, Councilmember Blatts, the city proposes to take 76% net income of all lawyers in the city, would you feel like you were being treated fairly inequitably? Councilmember Haney, what about landscaping companies? You think 76% of your net income is a fair take? I don't think so. And I just want to also say, our sales from last year are down 4%. Okay, we're not growing. So whatever HDL has told you is coming your way, if you tax us this much, is not true. And you should have done better research. I passed around a sheet of paper when this tax was first proposed and I sent it again that outlines the current status that that outlines the current status that hasn't changed. It's not going to change anytime soon until Mitch McConnell is out of Congress about how we are taxed at the federal level. And honestly, at a personal level, this feels like I'm getting raided all over again. The price I will have to raise on what are mostly seniors, honestly, the majority, 50% of our clientele are over 50 years old. And whether they have a medical recommendation or not, they're using it for sleep and pain and anxiety. So they are the ones, mostly in your city in the Ojai Valley, they're gonna get hit by this tax. It's not a 3% increase. It's, it's about a nine or 10%, because we are taxed and taxed and taxed again. So it's not a straightforward increase, and I'm begging you, until the federal government changes the rules, do not discriminate against cannabis in your city. We've already taken so many hits, and we are not thriving with dollars like everybody thinks, okay? That's, that's a lie. And if anybody did any research and came and talked to me or the other dispensary owners, they would understand that we are not making dollars, okay? We are not, we are just, we're trying to pay good wages. We hire people. I have 16 employees. And you're looking at pay cuts. Nobody gets raises. I take away senior discounts. I raised, I raised prices. And if that's what you really want, fine. But it feels like a stab in the back. It feels like the city didn't really understand what they were going for. And in comparison to Santa Barbara and all, and Port wine, Amy, and all the other cities that you compare yourselves to, when, oh, they're getting tax money.
Okay, well, thank you.
Those cities don't have restrictions. Those cities have no restrictions on formula businesses or cannabis licenses.
Your time has been ceded. Yeah, I appreciate the information.
May I make a quick comment for Chelsea? Are you still there? Chelsea?
We're not discussing, but go ahead.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, we can't discuss it now. The council member, Wierig, and I have asked that this be put on a future agenda.
Thank you.
As soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. Okay, are there any other people in the waiting room for public communications?
Mayor Johnson, there are no more public communications, however. We do have, I'm not sure if it's due to my error, but I see another name from Agenda Item 2 that is, has popped into the waiting room, if you want to hear that person. And I also, it looks like one of our, that we have two more people that would like to speak on Agenda Item 2 that I may have overlooked.
Okay, well, we've closed the public hearing, and I guess we can reopen it. But first, check and see if the people wanted, what item they'd like to discuss, to be sure we know what we're dealing with.
Okay. I know the one person is signed up for Agenda Item 2, and the other one, I'm not sure, and that's Kathy Nolan, and I can ask her if you'd like.
Yes, please ask.
Kathy, you should be unmuted. Can you tell us?
Actually, you know, I did register online, and I selected Items 2 and 3. So when my name didn't come up, I was trying chat, et cetera, but it didn't work. So I'll make a real quick comment if that's.
Okay, hold everything, hold everything. We just wanted to know if you want.
Oh, yeah, I do. Okay.
Hold everything, please, please. The council, is there any objection to reopening the hearing? And we have two people that would like to speak. Hearing, hearing no objection. Okay, I'm going to reopen the hearing. And Gail, bring in the two folks in the waiting room, or one at a time.
Okay. Kathy, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, so I wanted to say, in alignment with the city of Ojai, well, the city of Ojai aligning with the Paris Climate Agreement a while back, to combat climate change and to accelerate and intensify the actions and investments needed for a sustainable low-carbon future, let's continue as leaders and adopt the REACH codes. I would also encourage any educational programs, outreach, and incentivized programs, which you did allude to. And as far as some of the exceptions, I do agree that some of those should be removed from the exception list. And I will leave that to your deliberation. But I would certainly say that if you didn't do it immediately with your six-month review that was mentioned earlier, that may be a time to start adding back some of the exceptions. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I would like to say, what are we waiting for? Let's move forward. Thank you.
You mean took away, right? Not adding.
Well, no, there were some exceptions, for instance, like the ADUs, et cetera. And I think at some point, whether it's now or in the very near future, we need to make sure that they do become all-electric. And not be an exception, a further exception.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Gail, do you have one more person that wants to speak?
Yes, this is the final person, and it's Jonathan Ullman.
Okay, Jonathan, are you there?
Jonathan, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome, Jonathan.
Hi, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say, it's John Ullman from the Los Padres Chapter of the Sierra Club. I'll make this quick. Please pass the REACH code tonight. Make a difference. The world is burning. Let's start something right now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, the hearing is now closed again, and the council will engage in deliberation. And I will be looking for a motion here shortly. Bill, your hand's up first.
Yeah, I wanna get to the one piece of work before us to determine, and that's the appeal process. I know that staff has recommended, and I agree, that an appeal should start with the Community Development Director. I, I wonder whether or not, though, at that point, in other words, if we're gonna treat it more or less like a director's exemption, really, kind of, kind of step process. It's not the same thing, but nevertheless, where the appeal would go first there. The normal process would be to appeal to the Planning Commission and then to the council. And I'm more comfortable staying with this kind of system that we have anyway. And, you know, normally for, rather than setting up a special appeal process, I know it's a special situation, but I'm more comfortable having it go through from Community Development Director to Planning Commission. I also wanna make sure we stipulate a very modest appeal fee. I would suggest, similarly, how, to how we've worked this before, maybe have a statement in there of, maybe stipulate $100 or as otherwise modified by council resolution, because otherwise, people can be inhibited just by the cost of filing an appeal. So those are my two suggestions. I don't know what my colleagues think of that. Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Well, I have two reactions. One, I think we, let's ask the staff, not tonight. Well, maybe they would know tonight, you know, what the actual processing, covering our costs, not trying to make anything, how to just, what it costs to run it through the process. And if somebody is proposing a new construction project in our city, it seems like $100, if that's the price, then that's fine. But if that's not the price, I don't see any reason to subsidize that in a project that will be costing literally hundreds of thousands, if not million dollars, if it's a brand-new construction.
I wasn't contemplating that every appeal would be a big-dollar item.
What, are you thinking like an outbuilding or something?
Yes, there might be specific, modest situations.
Okay, James, do you have any idea what the basic cost just to do the paperwork and bring somebody through the appeal process?
Yeah, we actually just put that estimate together for the hedges fences and walls, which had a similar kind of process. And I think we estimated between $250 to $350 for full cost recovery. But obviously, council could choose to, you know, subsidize that.
Okay, other comments? Is that a form of a motion that we can?
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion of, we set the fee at $250, and I'll see if there's appetite for seconding this. And that we set it up where it goes from Community Development Director or Manager to Planning Commission.
Okay, I'll second it. I think that's, that's fair. Okay, discussion? Yeah, Susan?
I'm sorry, Bill, it just, I can't wrap my head around that. Are you thinking there's gonna be even more exemptions than the ones you've already put in place?
No. This is, we have to specify the appeal process here.
What, what do you envision would be, who would be asking for an appeals?
It's in the second. Susan, it's in the second reading that we have to specify an appeal process.
Okay, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Right. I think what Bill's referring to is if it is excessively expensive to do something or it's technologically impossible to do it, they have to come and make their case. So it's like a variance of sorts.
Okay.
So the suggestion is it'd be a nominal fee.
Okay, that's fine. I get it. Okay.
Randy?
This is probably more a question to Matt or to James. But the standard appeal process for construction mechanisms or construction-related issues would be through the BAB. Am I correct?
If the item relates to the California Building Code, then yes. It would be Building Official Decision and Building Appeals Board Appeal.
So are we, I'm not in disagreement with, with, with Councilman Wierig's suggestion. I just wanna make sure that we're not breaking any rules. Are we circumventing BAB by going to the Community Development, which is in land use versus building construction? Because I see gas plumbing and fixtures and things of that nature being more related to building construction than to land use. But, so if one of you can help me to understand that better, I'm not in disagreement. I just would like clarification.
I'll give you, Randy, I think what we're talking about here is a policy decision. And only the City Council is elected, so there's gotta be a process that comes to the City Council. The BAB is supposed to be dealing, usually there are three things. The two things under the law, one is to advise the planning, or the Department of the Building Official. If he has a question about how to interpret a code, he goes to the BAB, and they help him do that. Or if a citizen disagrees with the application of the law, they go to the BAB, and it's unappealable. But these are not elected people, so it's not really a policy decision that they're, they're making. If we delegate this to a non-elected group, it seems to me that that's not, you know, the best procedure. Now, the council could do the third thing if they think it's got some technological building stuff involved in it that they don't feel like planning is thoroughly vetted. You could refer it for an advisory opinion, just like you did on fire and some other things. So you could have it both ways, but by bringing it through planning and to the council, the council stays in control.
Okay, well.
I'd add, on the legal side, that it would not be improper to have the Planning Commission and then the council consider these matters. As the mayor noted, it's more of a land use policy than a pure technical building code. The state building code requires decisions of the building official interpreting the state code to go to a Building Appeals Board, which is supposed to be staffed with technical experts. This is something different. This isn't a policy above the state minimums. It taps into land use. I think it would be defensively structured to go to the Planning Commission and council.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that. I said, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to understand it better.
Okay.
I would think the community would want to understand it, too.
Right. Okay, so Bill has made a motion. I've seconded his motion. You know, this is kind of a straw vote until we get to the, filling in the blanks. But if there's, is there any objection to Bill's idea of, what, $250, was it, Bill?
$250 was my motion.
$250, okay, I don't hear any, so put that down as a straw vote in favor of putting that in the front of the blanks. What else do we have? Suzie, you have your hand up.
First of all, isn't the Climate Committee waiting in the wings to answer any additional questions?
They're there if you have a question for them.
Yes, I, I would like them to address the comment from the gas company and about the biogas. Because I know that other people think that this is something that's doable. I'd like to hear them, their comments on that.
Gail, is Steve Colome in the?
And I, and I would like to give them the opportunity to respond to any issues that came up from the comments.
Okay. Well, can I make a point of order there? We're in deliberation, Susan, so I don't think we should have.
But we never had the opportunity. It's part of my deliberations.
Well, are you, are you confused on it? I think Steve Colome did send us all a written explanation, or you just want it for public?
Yeah, I think it's a courtesy, since I believe Phil Wy is waiting. I wanted to hear if he had anything to say. And, and they, they provided us with their justification for why they did not want all these carve-outs. I think that at least bears some discussion, because we are, we're educating the public as well as delivering.
But we, Susan, we've been through that part, and we had, when this was crafted, the council, you and I didn't necessarily agree with it, but they had some carve-outs. So unless somebody who voted on the prevailing side of the carve-outs, we're not gonna be going back to revisit that. But if, there's no objection from the council for the additional information about the, what is that, biogas? Is that what the, the comments, does anybody, I, I read the article. It seemed like it's, to me, it's not an objection. If anybody else would like to hear from the Climate Committee, we can do that.
Well, I, I, I would just say that I would like to proceed with deliberation, because I think we had, this is why I think we've crafted this very carefully. We have a six-month period for a lot of these questions to become up and be, and be more carefully vetted. And so I don't, I don't think tonight is the time to go into a full vetting of all the issues involved here. We're gonna have a six-month period of further vetting.
All right. Well, Vanessa, I still want to say this. Because we're, due to the, you know, we're, because we're in Zoom meetings, if this was a true public hearing, we would have, in the, in the council chamber, 100 people tonight. Okay? And I wanna point out, for the record, that we had at least 48 comments in favor of the, of the REACH code as proposed by the Climate Emergency Committee. I think that needs to be addressed, okay? And, and I, as, just as, even just out of respect to the public, to the well, better-educated public, we had six people who wrote letters opposing. And, and this is in addition to the people who spoke tonight. On the list of the 48 comments, I think there were four that spoke, but others were not, did not submit comments. I wanna propose something that I feel is very important. As I said earlier, we're in a teachable moment, okay? The public wants to be educated.
But the, this is not a teachable seminar right now. We did that last meeting, and we had everybody from the Climate Committee there, and they had an opportunity. They had an opportunity tonight to speak. Is there anyone on the council, just, Suzie, just saying, is there anyone on the council that feels that the comments made about the biogas is not clear and is going to affect the way you vote on what we've got before us? I think you're right, Suzie. It's something worth talking about, but we don't have to do it right now.
Yeah, I don't think it's germane to the deliberation on the what's before us tonight.
I, I would like to finish my comment. I would like to propose, starting today, that all of the public comments, that people took time to write, and there were some letters that were extremely educational, four-page letters. For example, from Jan Dietrich of the Citizens Climate Lobby, which represented 40 members that live in the Ojai Valley. I would like to propose that, starting today, all these comments be made available to the public the same as the county makes public comments available. And if we don't have the staff to do it, I would like, you know, I'll bring this up perhaps at the end of the meeting again.
A question for staff.
Know that we take their comments seriously, both.
Thank you, Suzie. We've got deliberations going on, and you are taking this, it's an important point. Let's ask the city manager, is there any problem with making the, all those letters that we have received email available to the public if they'd like to read them?
Well, they, they are, they're always available, you know, as a public records request. I guess the question was, if we wanna make it available like the county does, we can do that. But we would have to modify. Right now, we take comments up until the council meeting, which the county doesn't do. They cut off the day before. So, you know, it's a little give and take. We could cut it off the day before and then have them posted. So there's a couple, you know, it's council.
I think what Suz is asking, if we could post them.
Yeah, so.
After the meeting.
So we could, we would have, we would have to give a deadline of the end of day yesterday instead of end of day today, and then we'd be able to post them on Tuesday.
We can even post them after the meeting. I'm just saying that in situations like this, where. I'm just saying that in situations like this where we have, I've had a tremendous education from the public comments, you know, in all directions. I would like, even though this is, we've made a decision, we're making a decision tonight, I think it's fair, since the public, most of the public isn't speaking on Zoom, that we post all the comments, and I'm saying.
We have that comment. That's a procedural one, and we will pursue it. Now, Randy's been patient over here. What did you?
I just, you know, again, we're, one, we're spinning our wheels on issues that aren't, that aren't pertinent to the discussion here on this issue. I just want to be clear that when we make a decision like posting comments, that we need to understand that it's, that we're not exempting any other comments that need to be posted on any other item. So we need to understand that that's the burden we're placing on staff, is that all submitted comments will now be posted here on in. We need to think about that. And staff needs to get back to us and let us know what the feasibility and what the cost is.
Okay, so if there's no objection to what Randy just said, James, as time permits, I know we've got a lot of things, including the COVID virus and what's going on right now. We'll have some announcements tonight to talk about. But as you have time to do it, why don't you work with Suz and find a way that at least people will have access, they do have access. They just have to, we need to make a note or something of how they get it.
Okay.
Make it as easy as possible, okay?
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, back to the topic before us, the reach.
Would it be appropriate, Mayor Johnston, to make a motion to approve the ordinance as submitted and as amended by myself earlier and seconded by you?
The one on the fee?
Yes, the fee and the appeal process, just to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended by the stipulated fee and appeal process.
Okay, but are you saying approve the whole thing or just the amendment?
Yeah, make a motion to, let's do the amendment first. Okay.
Okay, well, it would be appropriate. Let me just make one comment. Is, I'm sure somebody will remind me if I don't remember myself, is that the last time this came before us, I thought that the cleanest straightforward proposal came from our committee, and it actually, it didn't spell it out, but it covered everything we tried to do with the carve-outs. I lost that vote. So the only way that's coming back this evening is if there's somebody who voted in favor of the carve-outs wants to reconsider any of them. And I don't, I haven't heard anybody say they did. But if you do, now would be the time to say something. And if you didn't, then Bill's motion is in order.
Okay, well, and my motion is ready to be voted, maybe.
Okay, I'm hearing crickets, I guess. Yeah, okay. Then the motion before us, James, you need any other blanks filled in, the complete process?
You said appeals process.
Okay, so that's, and you guys are clear, you and Matt are clear on what Bill suggested?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess we're ready for a vote on the second reading. And Gail, will you call the roll?
Mayor Potemblatz?
Yes.
I can't actually.
Yes, can you not hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
I'm going to give a reluctant yes, even though I'm disappointed that this council will with our Climate Emergency Committee's recommendation. I'm appalled, but I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Wow, that's unanimous. We have a reach code in the city of Ojai.
Yes.
Early there's a teaching moment about democracy in all this, too.
Thank you.
And with a six-month review, which I think would be very helpful.
It could be an ugly process, but we've made progress.
Six months reviews. Thank you.
Yeah, right. And I want to thank the climate committee for all their work on this. And in six months, they have the opportunity to come back, and maybe we will fine-tune this and make some changes if need be. So if we can do it for fences and hedges, we certainly can do it to save the planet, so.
And we did, we did saving the planet a lot faster than fences and hedges.
Yeah. Keep the momentum going. Okay.
They did both require declaring an emergency, though, Bill, which.
No, that's true. That's true.
Okay, well, our next topic is rival fences and hedges. The time we've been working on it's been at least over four years because I've been on the council about that long. That is the ATP project. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. And I will give a brief introduction, and then we've asked the consultants who have been working on this project to give a brief overview of the project, the demonstration project. We are planning currently to launch this project on December 7. So we wanted to put that date on everybody's calendars, and we'll start pushing that information out. But the, this is the demonstration project, a six-month or longer. We're anticipating it'll probably be longer. A six-month or longer demonstration project of the Maricopa Highway Lane Reduction. And so with, I think I will keep it brief and just leave it at that. And we have our consultants who we are asking to walk us through the project.
James, before we go to the consultant, I'd just like to say that the reason this is on our agenda tonight is not because it's new or we're taking a different step, but for whatever reasons, there was some confusion between SCAG, who provided the money, and the city regarding what had to be approved by the council. And I guess some members of our staff thought that the staff could do it. And when James and our city attorney went over it, they felt that, you know, legally, the city council has to approve MOUs. So it's here for the, to approve something that we've already approved. I know there are some concerns about the language, and both the city attorney and the city manager went back with SCAG to be sure that SCAG was indemnifying us, and we're indemnifying SCAG. I mean, it's sort of procedural, but we're the ones in the field, and we are the ones who applied for this grant. And I'd like to, in memory of Chris Hilger, for those of you who attended the meeting back at Sarrazati Park, and I guess that's what, a year, year and a half ago now, he was the guy who got up and said respectfully, while he wasn't wild about this whole idea, he said that it would not be responsible for us to go forward without doing some kind of a demonstration. I think he even suggested hay bales or something out there so that people would get an idea in the field what we're talking about. And so that's all this is going, this MOU does, is provide us with that kind of information. And if the information shows that modifications need to be made, or if it says that it was a lousy idea or whatever, that's what the demonstration is for. So with that, Randy?
Mayor, just, thank you for those comments. Can we have our city attorney actually explain indemnification to the community and also the extents of these MOUs? And then I might have a couple more questions for him when he's done. But if he can take five minutes or less, Matt, if the mayor will allow it, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, James, you've heard the request. Did that come before or after we hear from the consultants?
I think, I think it's fine to talk about this. That we were going to, we were going to flip it and have the MOU discussion at the end, but we're talking about it now. Let's address it now.
Okay, Matt, would you, Randy had the question on indemnification?
Happy to cover it briefly. What's proposed in the SCAG MOU is a reciprocal indemnification clause. What that means is that if there is a third-party claim by someone that is not the city, SCAG, or the consultant, say, a third party who's injured in a car accident, if they bring a claim against the city as a result of this project, and the city can prove that the source of the claim, the source of the accident is work done by the consultant or by SCAG, then we will claim indemnity, we will claim for the defense costs against SCAG and the consultant. But conversely, if SCAG or the consultant are sued, and the source of the claim is alleged to be something the city did, then the city would be obligated to defend SCAG and the consultant. So what's on the table, and this is captured in attachment C on this item 3, page 9, section 10, indemnity, is a pair of reciprocal indemnity clauses. SCAG and the consultant agree to identify the city. The city agrees to identify SCAG, not the consultant, in return. The consultant will only be able to look to its contract with SCAG and whatever that may provide. The other piece to bear in mind on this is, in terms of a practical matter, we would be obligated to identify SCAG and the consultant if there was a judgment against those two for actions that were the result of the city resulting liability to a third party. Same would be true on the other side. If a third party was held to benefit, if SCAG and consultant were held to be liable to the third party for some action we did, we'd be obligated to pay it, and vice versa. The, one open question is Caltrans, which of course owns the road through the state. Where the liability lies there? There, under the existing agreement of Caltrans for the design of the ATP project, similar. There's a reciprocal indemnity clause under that one as well. The city agrees to identify Caltrans for any claim that stems from the city's work. Caltrans agrees to indemnify the city for any claims stemming from the city's work. So in the reality, putting it perhaps back to more brass tacks, if there's a lawsuit and somebody is injured, they will name everybody. City, Caltrans, SCAG, and the consultant. And I'm not giving anything but a plaintiff's attorneys because they all know that. The defense will turn on what was the cause of the accident and what was the blame for it. And that's going to depend on the exact facts. The city would contend that we didn't do anything. Consultant and SCAG did things. We might also take a look at Caltrans and whoever caused the accident. If there's, if it's two drivers or a driver, pedestrian, something like that, we would want to understand what the facts were there. But we are agreeing in the proposed MOU with SCAG to indemnify SCAG for anything that stems from the city's own actions, including the city staff's actions, and vice versa, as is fairly typical in a intergovernmental grant agreement of this type.
Okay.
This is fairly standard, I believe, right?
Mayor, Matt, thank you. I just had one more question again because there's a third party that's adjacent to this entire conversation, and that's the school board. How does, are there any MOUs that we're creating with them? Or are there any indemnification that we need to think about regarding school board? The fact that what we're doing is going to impact their ingress and egress onto their property?
At the moment, we have no written agreements with the school board. We're not obligated to indemnify them, nor are they us. Were an accident to occur at the juncture between the school and the road, everybody would be named, and that would be a fight over what was the responsibility for it.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, James, you have the consultants in the queue?
Yes, and if the, if Gail can let them in.
I will move them to panelists so that you can see them.
And while we're letting them in, so we wanted them to walk through the project so people have every chance we have to give people a better understanding of what it'll look like in the next.
Tony, hi Dana.
Hey, everybody.
Good to see you. So I'm going to jump right in here. Thank you for having us. We know that it's already been a long night for you guys, and we're going to try to make it as quick as possible.
Also.
Sorry. Okay. So my name's Tony Garcia, and I'm joined by Dana Wall, who is our project manager on this project. I am an architect. I'm based out of Miami. And we have offices in Brooklyn, New York, and in Miami, Florida. And we do an extensive amount of work in California and really all around the country. We do transportation planning primarily, that is bicycle pedestrian planning. But we also back into that, the sort of demonstration project type through our work in transportation planning. I'm going to get into that in a second. Most of the time in our work, we're doing research on what are called quick-build projects. These are just a few of the publications that we've authored. We're recognized as the global experts in what's called tactical urbanism or the quick-build methodology. And here are just a few of those publications. Some of them are federal studies. The National Association of City Transportation officials recently worked with us on some streets for pandemic response recommendations for cities. And then there's all these other sort of guides that we've done. And we do these types of demonstration projects extensively. There are bike lane projects, what we call intersection repair, which are curb extensions and pedestrian improvement projects. And you can go to our website and see, you know, a lot of these examples there. So most of the time in our work, we're actually doing planning and renderings that are similar to what I'm showing here. This is from a project we did many years ago in St. Louis. And oftentimes, you know, we do the rendering, and we're left with a discussion among, you know, constituents and city staff and city engineers about what is the right solution. And so we developed this terminology and this methodology called quick-build, which is just a way of describing doing small, short-term tests. It's about testing before you invest. And that's the heart of the work that we do, and it's the heart of this project as well. And so when you think about how we do normal projects right now, most of the time, 99% of the time, you jump right into your permanent design. And you spend, you know, many, many years, three to five years, developing a design only to build it and to see that certain things didn't quite work the way that you thought they would. And so what we like to do is break down project delivery into smaller increments using temporary materials. And at each step in the process, you learn a little bit more about what the project, how the project will function, and you improve the quality of the materials. For this project, we're in the one-year increment, which means that the duration of the materials is much longer than what you would consider a pop-up. So that idea of the hay bales, I really love that. That would have been the step one, that pop-up demonstration, right? Now we're going on into the pilot demonstration, which is a longer, a longer duration. And so why do we do this type of work? Primarily, myself, as a relatively young person, I've been doing this already for almost 20 years. And giving this, explaining this methodology, I don't want to wait for infrastructure to be, you know, built in my neighborhood as an advocate for 20 years. I want things to happen now, and then we can figure out, you know, what works as we go along. And then also, it gives people an opportunity to see in real life what works and doesn't work. Because we can, you know, discuss what the merits of a drawing or of a plan, but when you see something in real life and you see how it functions, it either is a success or it is not, and you can fix it, but there's no discussion about it. And so it's really based off of understanding how people use the infrastructure and designing around that rather than in a vacuum. So about our process here, we started in March. Just, the last trip that I took before quarantine was to Ojai. And it was the first week of March. We had our first CAC meeting at that point. And then from there, we moved into, within one month, we had a permit submittal to Caltrans. And we got that permit finally in September, which in the scale of really transportation projects, you know, it was a very quick timeline to get our permits. And, you know, we didn't know whether the school was going to be back in session or not, so we were really trying to accelerate that process. And that leads us now to, you know, preparing for buying the materials and just getting all of our schedules in place. And some of that we're going to explain to you in a second. So just generally about the section, and there are certain locations where this is not typical. But for the most part, 90% or more of the corridor reflects the drawings that you're showing, that we're showing here. So your existing section is like this. It's two lanes in either direction and a center-turn lane, where your outer lane is very wide, so it's a travel lane and a shoulder. So the design that is in the demonstration and is reflected in the permanent design is taking part of that outer lane and creating a protected bike lane and on-street parking and replacing the outer lane. So that's what all of this encompasses. That outer lane, that 20 feet, becomes bike lane, buffer, and parking for, as a typical condition. And we'll walk you through every block so that you see how that all shakes out. For for as a typical condition and we'll walk you through every block so that you see how that all shakes out. Uh, here's a a quick rendering of of what that would look like as you approach church and the the entrance to the high school coming from Kuyama. Uh, you can see there, and I'm gonna get into the materials in a second, but you can see the the travel lane. And what what becomes of the of the wide outer lane, that on-street parking with the bike lane. And here you see uh what we call zikla armadillos. They're a little dome-shaped delineator. And then our our zikla planters, which are are meant to approximate what uh the locations. Uh, and the spacing of the trees in the permanent project. Now, in terms of our materials, um we we had to work with Caltrans's standard materials. Uh, so there's a Sherwin-Williams hotline, which is a standard pavement uh paint. And then we proposed using these uh zikla armadillos as delineators. That separate the parking from the from the bike lane. And I think this is an important point to make here and we'll make it again, is that um. We thought this was important because a a lot of the time, the corridor is not gonna have on-street parking. So these delineators are really gonna be the only physical separation besides the uh the planters between motorists and the bike lane. And we thought that was very important. And um, one of the the things that we heard throughout the process was. We don't want the the big white ugly sticks like you see all over the place. Um, those are are delineators that are used frequently for bike lanes. Uh, but but we were we were told and heard loud and clear that people did not want the the corridor looking like like a a work zone or a highway. So uh we were sensitive to that. And also, these are so low to the ground that they're mountable. Um, and so for our our emergency vehicles and any sort of sort of evacuation procedures. Um, people are gonna be able to get over them and and into the the bike lane to be used as a as a emergency um access point. So w- when we install the project in December, uh there's gonna be signage all around the corridor. Uh, signage that directs people to the website if they haven't learned about the project so far. And also to our survey so that we continue to monitor and and figure out what works and doesn't work throughout the whole life of the project. So remember at the beginning, I showed that diagram that 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 said build, measure, learn. We're we're in the build part. And then as soon as December seventh is over, or as soon as that week is over, we're gonna be in the learn part. So and and measure also. So that's part of why we we include extensive signage along the corridor. And I I'm I'm gonna hand it off to Dana in just one second. I want I want to wrap this up uh on the the measuring. So what is it that we're measuring? Um, and how are we doing it? And I I'm excited to 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 tell you some of this because. Um, it's just really interesting technology that's providing us with information that we we've never had before. Um, not in the in the real-time way that they're giving to us. So we're gonna be measuring bike, pedestrian, car, bus, and and truck volumes. And just a a a quick note on on volumes, because it it's been brought up several times. Um, in terms of COVID and our current uh traffic patterns. Um, how can you, you know, measure something if if our traffic patterns are are not at their normal uh place? And and that's a really valid concern, I think. But when we look back at the data and and um the data that that Caltrans has. Out uh and and that they report publicly, um the pre-COVID, you had nine thousand cars a day on average over the whole corridor. And our data, and I'm gonna show you in a second what that data looks like, currently, your traffic is at eighty-one hundred cars a day. So the the traffic has not substantially dropped as a result of COVID. Um, there has been a change, obviously, and it's probably mostly due to to school not being in session, which which is certainly a concern. Uh, but the actual traffic patterns haven't really dipped that much the way that we've seen in other locations where people are commuting. Uh, in a re- on a regular basis to a downtown, let's say. We're also gonna be studying s- speed, uh crashes, um and how people feel when they're when they're walking and biking. That's part of that survey. And then we're also gonna be uh looking at cut-through traffic. And we heard this early on in our CAC meetings. Um, and it's come up several times. So our numina sensors, and and I'm gonna explain what that means in a second. Um, they're they're little sort of spray can-sized uh. Devices that that are doing our data collection and they're posted all around the corridor. There's five of them. Uh, and so they're gonna be capturing cutoffs at at uh Vial Rio and at church. And then there are also traffic counters set within the neighborhoods right now capturing before data and will be able to capture after data. So our our data collection effort is pretty robust. Uh, not only along the corridor, but the spillover effect is gonna be measured and and quantifiable. Um, we're also looking at in terms of what what is it that we're evaluating? That church road entrance to the school, I think it was one of the the main issues that came up from the start of the project. Uh, we're also looking at truck turns and and the radii that we're using at all of these intersections. We're gonna be cognizant of the MRI truck access to the hospital, which is why those delineators being so low to the ground is important. An MRI truck can go right over the delineators, no problem. Um, and then there's also access to vans. And and in general, how are these materials performing? Uh, our permit requires us to have monthly recording to to Caltrans on these key metrics. Um, and then we will be working with the city to to monitor over the first few weeks. Um, uh, all of these metrics and making sure that uh if there are backups or if there's. Any sort of issues that that those things get addressed early on and we we uh we get ahead of it. And then um, I just wanted to show you that those numina devices, uh this is the type of data that they pick up. Uh, and so here, um, they're not capturing any person's data, so it's all anonymous. And 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 the devices pick up uh basically physical features like the size of of something. And then they they extrapolate what what that vehicle is or what that movement is. And we can teach it to do different things, like um study the the turning movements or uh other other types of of behaviors. And then just just to wrap up the the data, and I I'm sorry to 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 talk about it much, but I I find this to be so cool. Um, in without this technology, typically you'll have a traffic engineer, you you know. Do a an analysis to come to come up with some of this data. This information, what you're looking at right now is is basically a snapshot of a day uh from this past week. So it is actually what happened. It's not an extrapolation or some algorithm somewhere. It's just the the raw numbers. So there you see there were a hundred and two pedestrians at this location, twenty-six bicyclists, and seventy-two hundred cars. So that that alone, having that access to real-time data is gonna be huge for for this project and and for quick build projects in general, I think, all around the country. Uh, and so, okay, I'm gonna hand it off to Dana, who has really um stewarded this project along and and I have to thank her publicly. She because she's done a phenomenal job. So um Dana, take it away and and walk us through the the block by block here. I'll I'll advance for you.
Okay, got it. Um, all right, great. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. Um, so I apologize if it's a little bit small to see. Um, these project plans happen on the project webpage, so. Um, if you, you know, wanna refer back to them, blow them up, that sort of thing, but I think I'll just very high level go through the basic. Um, elements of the plan of what you'll see in these drawings. Um, so obviously, as Tony referenced before, you know, we're looking at a seven-foot bike lane, a five-foot buffer, pretty much consistent throughout with some slight variation. As well as the eight-foot on-street um parallel parking lane. Um, you're also gonna see, I guess, Tony, if you can just like call it out with your cursor as I'm referencing, so. Um, you know, you'll also see the planters that we're gonna be using. So those planters are. You know, equivalent to the spacing that has been drawn in the permanent plans um throughout the entire process. We also have those dots there in the site plan. Those represent the low-profile um armadillos, which we. Affectionately call them. Um, where there is an on-street parking lane, those um low-profile delineators are gonna be. Closest to the parking lane um in the buffer to ensure that there is that clearance um for emergency vehicles and detours. Uh, using the combined bike lane and buffer. Where there's not on-street parking, the delineators will be um right against the travel lane to provide that protection. For the bike lane. Um, if you wanna go to the next slide.
Does uh, excuse me, um, does this point out where your sensors are?
Um, this plan does not. We can point them out as we go. Um, they're at they're essentially at the intersection, so I will um have Tony point them out when we get there.
You're not at the Kuyama intersection?
No, there's not one there. We have um five total. So um, moving down uh the corridor here, um, I guess something to note here is, you know, that we can. Dive into if there are any more questions. There is gonna be a U-turn, um a single U-turn allowed there. That was a result of. Um, public feedback that we're hearing throughout the design process. Um, so you'll notice the delineator placement there is a little bit different than on the other side of the street heading northbound. Uh, next slide.
Sorry about that.
Um, okay, and then here approaching um. Church Road toward the school, you will see um the most primary design feature here is this um dedicated right turn lane. Um, you know, we think, you know, obviously with evaluation, we will see, we we have specified this as an area specifically for the sensors to study. Um, but you know, this is part of the design treatment at Church Road to make entrances and exits to the. School at this location more efficient. Um, and we will obviously be monitoring that very closely. Um, so at this intersection, there is a sensor. Um, basically, Tony, if you just wanna move a little bit to the left, yeah, it's it's affixed to a pole. Um, just to the left of the crosswalk. Um, it's an existing pole that's there and I believe um, you know, it's a it's a city pole. That is, I I think it's one of, it's the pole for the pedestrian crosswalk um beacon. So there is a sensor there. Um, and we we're essentially, you know, able to see the entire intersection, so. We will be able to monitor, you know, how many cars are making lefts into the school, how many cars are making right. Um, right turns and if there are any changes in that before and after traffic as a result of any of the striping. Um, especially also in the middle of the intersection. Um, if you wanna go to the next slide, Tony, I think we can see it a little better.
And and just a note on that that question that you had, uh Councilman, the. While we don't have a numina device at Kuyama, there there are counting boxes at Kuyama and Hermosa.
Um, my question here is, um, your sensor and then you're delineating, if you go back, are you delineating this, the existing? Um, ingress into the high school or the new one?
Yeah, so we, the sensors. The sensors have, the sensors were installed um the last week of September. So they have been picking up data now for over a month. Um, and what's really interesting also about the technology is that. If we retroactively decide, so say two months into the process, we want to evaluate another specific area that the sensor is picking up or something like that. It they it's essentially been collecting all of the data and storing it so that we can retroactively um evaluate any kind of new. Um, you know, area that might pop up that we want to investigate. So um. We definitely already, you know, we will have had plenty of time to collect a lot of before data, um especially now that the project will be installed in December. Um, so the the um, another thing to point out on this intersection, you know, we have some added striping there within the intersection at Church Road. Um, this is intended, you know, basically to make cars more confident making their turns into the school, which we hope will. Speed up and make more efficient the the ingress egress. Um, another thing to note, which I'll touch on again in a couple of slides, is the northbound segment of this block between church and Pyri. The continuous buffer um. Is, you know, a design consideration that we um, you know, deliberated with our internal team and with Caltrans. Um, and with the city. I'll I'll get back to that in a couple of slides. Um, the sensor at Pyri Road, if you wanna point it out, Tony is actually in um the upper-left corner of the intersection. Um, and so, yep, so and then, you know, as with each sensor view, it we try to pick up as much as possible of the intersection, so we'll get those curb extensions. Um, and be able to see, you know, how they're being used there. Um, and we'll also be able to, again, pick up, you know, entrances and exits um into and out of the school. Uh, next segment between Pyri and Ballerio, I think the important thing to call out here is this two-way, the bidirectional segment. Um, you know, primarily, it is two-way to support any students who are accessing the school from the neighborhoods connecting to Ballerio. Um, so that will be interesting. We are definitely going to be monitoring, you know, the entrances into the two-way bike lane from Ballerio. We do have a sensor as well at Ballerio. Um, basically, uh. I think it's, you know, the the red yield markings um that are gonna be removed there. It's just to the right of those. Um, keep moving the arrow to the left a little bit, Tony. Yeah. Um, so we'll be able to basically see the entrances, you know, any students that are making lefts into this two-two-way bike lane. Um, and then we'll also be able to monitor, you know, where they're, if they're exiting, if they're indeed using the two-way bike lane to enter the school at Pyri. As well, we'll be able to pick that up in the sensor. Um, so Ballerio Avenue is the fourth sensor, if you wanna go to the next slide. Um, so here, you know, this is just a pretty consistent configuration um of the on-street parking. Um, we don't have a sensor at Correo. And then if you wanna go to the final segment. Um, there are actually two sensors at Ojai Avenue because it is a bigger intersection, so. Um, and both of those are right there in the lower-left corner, um just in front of the really big tree. Um, so one sensor is kind of viewed, um is pointed toward the the trail and Rotary Park. And then the other sensor is focused on um the Maricopa Highway segment right there at the intersection. Um, and so then this is a, this is the second point that I'll refer to in a couple of slides. Um, you know, this merge lane coming off of Ojai Avenue was one of these other um design focus areas or considerations for the permanent project. That we are demonstrating with with this demonstration project. Um, so if we do want to move on to those, so um, speaking of the considerations for the permanent project, these are three. Um, sort of primary ways or um. You know, things that we deliberated during the design process of the demonstration project that will be informative for the permanent project. So um, number one is the use of the low-profile zikla delineators um being used throughout. So as Tony had mentioned, you know, these are where we we advocated for these and we wanted to use these and they're, they are where they are. Um, due to the likelihood that on-street parking will not be full a lot of the time or most of the time, so that is essential for protection of the bike lane. Um, and we wanted to see how they function and how they worked in case in the permanent project, there could be some other alternative that is used. Um, to provide additional protection for the bike lane. Um, the second design focus area is this block between Church Road and Pyri. Um, and I will get to that on the next slide, followed by the second um focus area, which is the merge lane at the Y. So um, I I I put in here the design of the sixty percent plans. Um, you know, this is what we were, you know, kind of concurrently reviewing, if not, you know, our process was a little bit. Um, accelerated, you know, even even quicker than the permanent project design. So um, this was one area where we deliberated um the design of the demonstration project to try out an alternative. Um, between church and Pyri. Um, so you'll notice, you know, there are not um any planters, uh which would be, you know, mimicking the placement of the trees in the permanent project. Um, the buffer is consistent, it is legible. Um, and there's also, you know, the curb extension there at Church Road. Um, to provide additional um pedestrian safety and to also um slow the turning of cars there um at that intersection. Um, and if you wanna go to the second focus area. Um, so this is another area um that we also went over, um, you know, in in deliberations during the design process. Um, you'll notice, you know, this is a merge lane coming off of Ojai Avenue heading northbound. Um, you know, this is, you know, this was designed over concerns of congestion um close to the intersection. Um, another, you know, thing that we we considered is that in the permanent project design, there is going to be an off-street path. Um, that reconnects the street a little bit further um from the intersection. And because, you know, the demonstration project is really only working within the existing striping that we have on the street, there's no new concrete or changes to existing concrete. Um, the bike lane did need to be extended to the intersection. Um, so these particular areas, the focus areas number one and two, um, we're gonna be very specifically monitoring. Um, and you know, the functionality. And, you know, the functionality of these designs will be, you know, taken into consideration for the permanent project design for the, for the final design. Um, and I believe the next slide, we start getting into the implementation timeline of the project. But I think we might want to stop there. And, you know, if, I believe you guys have printed copies or we can provide this presentation. So um, we're also happy to discuss the volunteer plan, um, as well as, you know, just kind of the run-of-show for how the project will be implemented.
Okay, James, where are we?
And so at that, we, we wanted to walk through and make sure everybody was really fully aware of what, what this is going to look like uh on December 7th, or starting December 7th. But with that, um, this was the point we were going to talk about the uh MOU, which we talked about earlier. So the uh, the action being requested is that uh council adopt that resolution of support that authorizes us to enter to the MOU and then also authorizes me to extend the project as necessary if the reopening of Nordoff High School does not occur as we were uh expecting. Uh, so with that, that, that's the uh resolution before council at this time.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff from council?
I have lots of questions. Um, Mayor, but do we want to take public comments first?
Uh, yes, we do. Well, if you're satisfied, you understand what's been presented, and I guess we all are.
Actually, I don't.
Let's go to public comment. Uh, Gail, do you have uh people in the queue?
Tony, if you could stop sharing your, oh, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So the first person we have is Anita Hendricks. Anita, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Anita, can you hear us? Anita?
Anita, are you there?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you barely. Can you s- turn up your volume a bit?
Maybe take somebody, he's on the, on the microphone.
Maybe we should come back to her.
Yeah, Anita, we're going to come back to you. And if you could uh figure out how to turn up your volume in the meantime, that would be really helpful. Um, the second person is Doreen Farr. Doreen, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Doreen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Welcome.
I am here representing Ojai United Methodist Church. We submitted a detailed letter with our comments, so I will just mention the main points. Our church has been located on the corner of Maricopa Highway and Church Road for over 60 years and directly abuts the project site. And the primary access to our property is from Maricopa Highway. Therefore, the proposed changes envisioned will directly impact everyone who uses our church property, including our congregation, Noah's Art Preschool, and the many community groups we allow to utilize our facilities. Our concerns are in four main areas. The first has to do with public outreach and education. We know you've had a lot of meetings, but except for Nordoff High School, we can see no mention of any meeting specific to the property owners which directly border the project site, like our church, nor any specific outreach to those residential neighborhoods which have their primary access within the project area, like the Ojai Terrace neighborhood and the condo communities. Before this project goes any further, we ask the council and staff to do direct outreach to these property owners and neighborhoods. Our second area of concern is traffic. It's unclear what a narrowing of Maricopa Highway will do to traffic flow, and we are worried about bottlenecks being created. It's also unclear how the project will change the ease of turning movements from all the roads that come into that area, especially any increased difficulty in turning from Church Road onto Maricopa Highway, as the only alternate route is long, inconvenient, and will impact other neighborhoods. Our third area of concern is finances. The city doesn't have enough grant money to complete both permanent ATP projects, and other sources of funds have not yet been identified. To further complicate matters, Ojai Unified School District does not seem to have yet voted to support the proposed changes on Nordoff's property and committed the funds to implement them, which could leave another large funding shortfall. And now the city is being asked to take on the additional expense and risk of an indemnification agreement. The last issue was the timing of the demonstration project. We thought the whole point of the demonstration was to give the community an idea of what the traffic situation would be like going from four lanes to two under normal traffic conditions. However, now the installation is planned for December, despite the fact that Nordoff and all the churches and businesses that surround the project area are working under highly restrictive pandemic rules, which have lowered the volume of traffic. Installing it now would negate the purpose of the demonstration and skew the results. We feel strongly that any demonstration project should not commence until after all pandemic restrictions are lifted and Nordoff High School is back in session full-time in order to accurately assess any impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dory. Uh, next?
Uh, next we have Dennis McCarthy.
Dennis?
Dennis, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Dennis?
Dennis, are you there?
Okay.
Um, shall I come back to him? Okay. So we will go to Diana Blanchard. Diana, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Welcome, Diana.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Diana Blanchard here, and I'm so happy to be able to meet with everyone this way regardless of our current life situation. So thank you for being here tonight. I do support ATP and the Go Ojai demonstration going forward. I ride my bicycle almost every day, and safety is our goal for pedestrians, bicycle riders, children, and adults. Upgrading and modernizing Ojai and the pedestrians and bicycle means of transportation is our goal. COVID has pushed many people toward bicycle riding for exercise, health, well-being, and many other things I've forgotten. Uh, lower gas emissions and uh addressing our climate change issues. Having the second lane removed uh from the four lanes has been okayed by the hospital and other entities. If an emergency should come up, uh, emergency vehicles can just use the bicycle lane that's been designated. I do plan on volunteering for the Go Ha- Go Ojai installation when it occurs, and I'm very excited to participate in this very important project. Thank you, everyone, for your time, concern, and efforts for uh this really important issue for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Uh, next speaker?
The next speaker is, I apologize in advance for um not saying your name properly, um, Cody Himley.
Cody?
Hello?
Hi, Cody, welcome.
Yes, it's Cody Himley, yes. Uh, I'm personally in favor of this project. I've done a lot of research on it and uh, someone brought up the, uh, the traffic concern and someone, uh, the data has shown that you only need, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, you only need the four lanes 12 minutes before and after school. And, I mean, I think it's a good idea, and I'm going to help volunteer with it, but uh I think it's good because it, it'll slow people down because I see people speed on that highway a lot, so. Just my two cents.
Okay, so thank you. Uh, the next speaker?
The next speaker is Kathy Nolan.
Kathy?
Kathy, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, and so kind of riding on the tails of the reach code, which was agenda item number two. And this is in regards to a sustainable, low-carbon future. Transportation is the largest sector when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions, not only in the, in the entire United States, but also in the state of California. And what better way to reduce emissions than to support multimodal transportation? I completely support the ATP and Go Ojai demonstration projects. Both are win-win-win projects for the community, the environment, and the planet. And I just wanted to share something really quick. Um, I am a planning commissioner for the city of Ojai, and I have chaired the Complete Streets Committee since 2011. Um, and I just, I found something that I wrote um in 2011, and I'll stand for three minutes or just cut me off. But I, this was something I presented to city council, and it was a report from Complete Streets, October 25th, 2011, once again. And I started by saying, I attended the Valleywide Discussion put on by County Supervisor Steve Bennett last Sunday. Five years ago, three Valleywide Discussions were held at Nordoff High School with approximately 250 attendees. The intention of the Valleywide Discussion was to come to consensus on what issues, topics, projects, et cetera, would provide the valley with the most impact and greatest benefit for all. Number one was making the valley a model green and sustainable community. Prior to that Sunday session, attendees were asked to participate in a survey and list what areas could further uh, the, what the community could use as part of this model. The item that participants ranked the highest was transportation. Con- comments included everything from adding bike lanes to public transportation to safety to green infrastructure. And I also wanted to just give a little history for people that are wondering, you know, part of the reason why we're doing this. The city of Ojai does have a Complete Streets policy, which was adopted by city council in a Complete Streets master plan. But um Governor uh Schwarzenegger signed AB 1358, the California Complete Streets Act of 2008 into law. The Complete Streets Act codifies policy that all streets be designed to accommodate all users. According to San Francisco Assemblyman Mark Lino, who introduced the bill, streets aren't just for cars, they're for people, and AB 1358 will ensure our roadways are safe and convenient for everyone, young or old, riding a bike or on foot, in a car or on a bus. AB, and I thought this was kind of interesting because our general plan is coming up. AB 1358 requires the city or county's general plan to identify how they will accommodate the circulation of all users of the roadway. The new general plan provisions would be required when local governments next revise what is known as the circulation element, which addresses flow of traffic through a local transportation system, utilizing better planning to ease congestion. Such accommodations may include sidewalks, bike lanes, crosswalks, wide shoulders, medium bus pullouts, and audible pedestrian signals, among others.
Okay, we reached that point here.
Okay, good. That's all right. I did say cut me off. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank Kathy. Okay, thanks a lot. Uh, the next speaker?
Uh, the next speaker is Jeffrey Weinstein.
Yeah, okay.
Jeffrey, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Jeffrey?
Jeffrey, go ahead and unmute yourself. Um, so I can put him back on hold and try Doreen Farr again if you'd like?
Okay, do that.
Doreen, are you there? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Did we have Doreen already?
She already spoke.
She was. It was, oh, it was Anita. I apologize.
Anita again.
Correct.
Okay, we'll try Anita. Are you there? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Is Anita the one that had volume troubles?
I think so, yes.
Can you hear me?
We can barely hear you.
I'm so sorry. I can't find an earphone. I'll yell if I can. I just want to say, can you hear me at all?
Yeah, we can. Well, listen carefully. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you, city council, for considering this. As, I, I want to, from the point of view of uh climate control, the United States is the top emitter of carbon dioxide in the world. That includes China and all the other countries we emit more CO2 than any other nuisance in the world. And the top 10% of the world's population contribute 50% of the carbon dioxide emissions in the world. The bottom 50% contribute 10% as one of the richest. And the ones that consume, that contribute the most, we should be taking a leading role in reducing these emissions worldwide. Not only that, of course, we have to deal with climate, the effects of climate in our own area with, we had 117 degrees this summer. We've had, as we all know, wildfires, and these are all effects of climate. Global warming. The bicycles are so much a part of this. I ride my bike daily, and as you, as the other lady mentioned, there's been a very big increase in bicycle riding. And we need to make it more accessible and safe and encourage others, everyone to do the same thing. There's so many advantages to bicycle use. So I just encourage you to continue with this. I have a few considerations such as on the Fourth of July, that barrage of cars coming and going, perhaps few times when Nordoff has students coming and going. Um, I don't know how these are going to be addressed, but I think that's an important concern. And perhaps there's a way to do it in a cost-effective way. I think it's important that we do it. But maybe there are measures we can take that will make it more affordable if someone is mentioning that we may not be able to fully fund it at this time. So anyway, I, I support your efforts, and I hope that you all uh continue on with this program. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Anita.
Okay, I'll try Jeffrey Weinstein again. Jeffrey, are you there? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Going once, going twice. Apparently Jeffrey's not there.
Yeah.
He normally doesn't have any trouble unmuting himself.
We do have one more speaker.
Okay.
And that is Dennis McCarthy. Dennis, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, this is Dennis.
Yeah, welcome, Dennis.
Okay, great. So this is Dennis McCarthy. I'm an Ojai resident and a member of the Save Maricopa Highway group. Uh, first, I'd like to start by saying I congratulate returning council member Francisina and to uh thank partying Mayor Johnson for his service to our community. Uh, so I'm addressing the council tonight about item three because I'm concerned that the MOU to indemnify SCAG for the demonstration project opens Ojai to costs that Ojai can't afford. City Attorney Summers' explanation confirms my fear. Now, I've drafted many indemnification agreements. They may seem harmless, but they can be very expensive. Now, we know that SCAG can be sued even if it's not guilty. And if SCAG is sued, the indemnity requires Ojai to pay to defend SCAG in any lawsuit and to pay whatever SCAG settles in payment. Now, I recall that Ojai City Council agreed that it wouldn't spend Ojai taxpayer money on the ATP project. And I think that should extend to the demonstration project too. So I would ask you, please, don't sign the MOU to indemnify SCAG. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay, Gail, do you have anyone else that's uh?
Um, no, Jeffrey Weinstein is still showing in the waiting room. Um, I can try him one more time if you'd like.
Give him one more chance, then we'll move on.
Okay. Jeffrey, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself. Doesn't sound like he's there.
Okay, let's take it back to council for deliberation or motion at this point. I would point out to everybody that uh the whole idea of a demonstration project is to avoid a lot of the uncertainties uh that are involved in spending money on permanent uh improvements that turn out not to be well thought out. Uh, and uh the uh, as far as indemnification, we just got drawn into a lawsuit that uh cost us about a third of a million dollars because of a, I guess, I don't know, you call it wrongful death, a, a, a car accident. Uh, and we're in it. Uh, if we, and I think one of the reasons, at least when I read the uh complaint, was that the city uh was concerned about uh the uh traffic safety out there and uh didn't act in a, in a timely way. Well,
Pause on that, Mr. Mayor. That suit hasn't yet fully settled. Let's.
They've not accepted the, I thought that you said that the.
Nothing's been signed yet. Let's pause on that one. Focus on the future.
Okay. You can mute me, Gail, on that. Uh, in any event, we do have an exposure already. Uh, and the fact that the uh SCAG is willing to help us uh pay for our. And the fact that the SCAG is willing to help us pay for our demonstration project that I think we should be doing anyway. You know, I think I look at it as two separate questions. It seems to me that it will never get off the dime if we aren't willing to at least do the demonstration evaluation. Any other thoughts out there?
Um...
Okay.
Yes, yes. Again...
Susan, and then Randy. Go ahead, Susan.
I think we received approximately 30 letters, very eloquent letters in support. And I'm hoping that this council does read them because these people, again, if it wasn't for the pandemic, these people would be at the podium. And I do want to discuss with James posting these letters as well. We received 24 letters opposing it, and they were all the same letter. So I want to do something about that. It's a little bit, it's not necessary to send the same letter 24 times. I would like to read one, one letter that I think represents the other 30 that we received, if I may. May I do that, Mayor? It's from a family in, on Del Oro, on, excuse me, on Del Norte. She writes, I write it on behalf of the HCP. Can you hear me? Is everything okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, but, you know, is this in favor or against, or what do you do?
If I could have assurance that the council is reading all of these letters, I wouldn't read them.
You can just assume that everybody does their job. I don't think you can guarantee that.
What?
I said you can assume that we're all doing our job, and I don't think you can get more of a guarantee than that.
All right, all right. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Randy.
So Mayor, I appreciate, was it Tony and Dana, for doing their presentation tonight. Again, the difficulties in doing this via Zoom is you just can't ask the, you can't ask the right question in the right moment and get the real clarity that you need. That's why I asked them to actually meet with me or any number of council people to go over this versus all this Zoom stuff. One question I have is, are they going to have a representative onsite? Or how are they, how are they setting up this project? That would be one question.
Okay, well, I'll get an answer to that, then you can get your next question. James?
Yeah, they're planning to be in attendance on December 7.
Okay, so have we asked them to come out earlier so that we can actually do that walkthrough prior to December 7?
No, we were trying to coordinate a virtual walkthrough, but they have projects to other cities that are the week before and the week after, so.
So, so one of the, so one of the concerns is actually the sensor placement.
It's the what?
The sensor placement. I'm not sure who came up with the locations, and again, that would be a question that I would have on any walkthrough, is are we identifying the two places that we want to, we want to do the studies? So that's just, that's one question. I guess we'll wait for the 7th, and then we'll see the results, I guess, in a week, and we'll figure that out. The other question I have, and it's related to, if you go through their manual, they start talking about doing this with the city and having city staff actually engaged in doing, performing the work or doing the setup. I want to clarify that with them also. What's our role, and are we being reimbursed for all of our time and effort that we're putting into this? Or is this the setup, the sole responsibility of this company through SCAG?
Okay, this is a question for our city manager as the contract administrator.
Yeah, and so the, they, we obviously are trying to get as many volunteers as possible, and I think up to, currently, we have 29 volunteers who are signed up. And we're hoping that there's going to be many more. But the Public Works Director is planning to be onsite for that, for the launch of the project. And then, as it's, as he noted in the implementation plan, there is the, I think it's three employees that he is going to be utilizing. And that, you know, that has been the Public Works Director's doing the project management, and he has coordinated that.
Is that reimbursed through the ATP grant?
The staff time is not reimbursed through the ATP grant.
So we, so we made a, we made a decision how many months ago about spending additional money? And that's, again, that's, that's a concern I have. When I see on here on attachment B, page 2 of 5, it says Miguel, Tony, and Fred, Miguel, Tony, and Fred. Then it says on page 3 of 5, again, this is all SP and city, it says city staff, Miguel, and Fred. I'm going to assume that Miguel and Fred are not city staff, that there's someone else?
No, Miguel and Fred are the two city, city staff people.
So, so on 2 of 5, when I see Miguel, Tony, Fred, Miguel, Tony, Fred, that again is more city staff?
Yeah, Tony's the consultant, but Miguel and Fred are city staff.
Okay, so if we're, if we're providing these services to them and we're not being, two questions. If we're not being reimbursed, that's coming obviously out of our monies. The second thing, while we have our staff doing this, what are we giving up? What is staff not doing for the rest of the city that while they're working for this entity? And why is, and why is that acceptable?
For the love of God, it's so obvious that you're not in favor of this project. Why don't you just go ahead and say so?
Well, everyone knows that.
He has, he has. It just...
I'm just asking, I'm just asking simple questions, and I would think that everyone would have the same concerns. This is, these are our monies, and this is our staff, and this is an entity that's being paid to do this. Why are we providing services and not being reimbursed? I think that's a very fair, honest question.
I think your question is, is this included in the proposal for the demonstration project? James, if it was not, then it's our responsibility. It's not the consultant's responsibility.
Right, right. And the, you know, like I said, the bulk of it will be volunteer time. And in my conversation with the Public Works Director, the, the staff time that will be used will be for, you know, supervision and things like that. So that, that is not included in the grant.
So Randy's concern is it's an in-kind contribution to the project that goes beyond the ATP funding. So that's a choice for the council. Other questions?
Mayor, there's just one other thing that goes along with that. Who's managing the resources? So are our staff reporting to the SP group, or is the SP reporting to us? Who's running this project, and who does our staff accountable to?
Our, our staff is accountable to, to the Public Works Director and myself. The project is being coordinated between the Public Works Director and the two consultants.
So who's in charge?
So who's in charge? The, ultimately, the city makes the call on this, so.
But we don't have the contract to make the call. See the circle I'm, I'm running in? I'm lost here, James.
I'm not sure what the, what is the circle? Do you understand that, James? I don't understand what that means.
The circle is we have, we have an entity that has a contract to provide a service, and we are being a part of that service. We're not being reimbursed. And, and I just want to know who's managing our side of it. You're saying Greg Grant is, but the reality is, he's not a part of their contract. So I, and then when I see Miguel and, Miguel and Fred working with Tony, Greg's not there, or is Greg there? So do Tony and Miguel, or do Fred and Miguel report to Tony that day, and are they under his guidance and jurisdiction?
They would remain under, under the Public Works Director's jurisdiction. And, you know, the, the permit is approved by Caltrans, so we've gotten that permit approved. And it'll be the Public Works Director and the consultants now working to implement that. And like I said, the, the goal will be using a majority of volunteer time to do so. And there will be minimal, if we can help it, or we will help it. But we will not use any additional staff time other than what's delineated in the implementation plan.
And just in this section, Mayor, just, because again, I think this is the clarity that we need. Any volunteer that's working on the public right of way, whose insurance covers them?
That would be covered by the city's insurance.
Yeah, it would be through our CJPIA insurance for the city.
So that's another, I just want to be clear, that's another obligation.
Exposure, not necessarily an expense yet, but it is an exposure.
That's, that's why we brought the MOU forward. It's, you know, there, there is risk, as we've discussed. But it is fairly typical risk for projects like these.
Okay, Bill, you have had your hand down.
Really quick, I'm not sure who is appropriate to answer the question, Mr. Summers or Mr. Vega. As our underwriter in JPIA, I assume has, is this standard language that has been reviewed and vetted in a, in a way by JPIA? Is this the kind of thing that's been, been reviewed by JPIA?
I'm not sure if we've, we've taken this particular contract to CJPIA for their review. We did, okay. Then I'll defer to James on that one.
Yes, and also, one other point is SCAG is also a JPIA member, so.
The language was approved by our underwriter then. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, Susan?
One more comment. The employees of the mob shop will be working on this, and they're, they will be reimbursed by the owners of the mob shop. So they have probably their own insurance, you know. I think we're going to have very capable volunteers out there. Randy, may I remind you that there's going to be one more meeting before, maybe even two, where you can get all your questions answered.
Okay, please go through the chair rather than making it personal.
All right.
Okay, it's not unusual for a contractor to have a contract administrator, the owner that's the beneficiary of the contract, as well as to have some coordination. But clearly, it's an additional in-kind expense, and clearly, it is an additional exposure. It's just a question of whether we choose to do it. I assume we have chosen to do it up to this point, anyway. And if we're going to, if we hadn't gotten a grant, and we were going to try to do as Chris Hilger had wisely suggested, we'd have all the expense and all the exposure. So it seems like it's a reasonable deal to find out whether or not the project should go forward and in what form. If this is to demonstrate whether the weaknesses are. There are people who don't want to see any change. I understand that. And there are also other people who think this is going to be wonderful without regard to what other complications there are. So it's, we're kind of working our way through. Randy?
Mayor, I just, you know, I, again, I, I don't know how many times I have to say this. No one's against bike lanes. No one. Zero.
They are against.
That I have spoken to are four bike lanes. The question is how much money we are going to put into this specific area to reduce the lanes from four to two. So there's a money issue that, to me, is greater than bike lanes. We could have had bike lanes five years ago. According to Kathy Nolan, we could have had them probably in 2011. No one's against bike lanes, so I think that that should be removed from the conversation. We're looking at expenditures. We made a decision as council not to put any more money into this. So tonight, we're not voting on anything. This is a discussion item.
We are voting on something. We're voting to not accept the MOU.
But I do have this, though. Listen, I have a list of, and I'm not going to bore you all with it, but I've got a list of 30 questions.
Okay, good.
Raising from environmental, from direct and indirect costs, from safety and public awareness, and obviously, a lot of questions that came up tonight. I am going to be submitting those to James tomorrow morning. And I will expect a response in writing to every one of my questions by the next council session. I was hoping Greg Grant would be here tonight, James. I'm sorry you're taking the brunt of this. But I just personally feel that the Public Works Director has failed us in his lack of communication. He has failed us in so many ways.
Personnel matter, we can deal with that separately.
But I just would like to know that I'll, we get a response before the next council session, James?
Yes, we, yeah, we, of course, we'll make our, our best efforts to respond as soon as we can on that.
Okay, Bill?
With genuine appreciation for the level of scrutiny that Councilperson Haney brings, I think it, it should be appreciated. But, you know, I, given all of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Of course I agree with it.
Okay, great. Was that 5-0 or 4-1? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, I couldn't hear the, Councilmember Haney, was that a yes? Okay, thank you.
You can hear me.
Can we assume that that's adopting the resolution supporting the project that includes the MOU?
Yes, that was your motion, wasn't it, Bill?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're done with that. We go to number four. Or cancellation of regular meetings.
Four is a Middle Stewart Canyon, Mayor.
Is it what? Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to five.
I know we want to get, get home, but...
No.
You are home.
I was, I was all thumbs. Sorry about that, guys. That is Middle Stewart Canyon Restoration. James?
Okay, I, we have a, we're pulling up a quick presentation that we have. The, the item is back before council because we, we had come to council to issue the bids, the issue the request for bids, and we got the bids back, and it's positive. We, the bids came in lower than we had expected, and so we are bringing it for that purpose to approve the bid from Crane, Mark Crane's Trees for $265,000. So that's the action item on the agenda. But we wanted to take a chance, and we'll keep it brief because we know it's been a long meeting already. But we wanted to just take a chance to really quickly walk through at a high level this Middle Stewart Canyon Restoration Project, which is getting started. We have a story map that's available, and I just accessed it through our, our Ojai City page on the Middle Stewart Canyon Creek Project that has information on the, on the project for anybody who's interested. But PAX Environmental is one of the groups that has been working with us, and they put together this story map, which is pretty, pretty exciting. I'll just kind of highlight it quickly, but the project, as you may recall, is the project to restore Stewart Canyon. And it has multiple benefits, such as habitat restoration, water preservation, and fire risk reduction. It also has the benefit of providing some environmentally oriented jobs for local youth, such as the CREW, the Concerned Resource Environmental Workers, and the California Conservation Corps, CCC. So it's putting people to work during this challenging time, and they actually were out here last week doing the kickoff, which was exciting. But the project and story map online have more information, but quickly, it's, it's going to be focused on removing the non-natives, quote-unquote invasive species, such as the Mexican fan palms, and then planting things like sycamores and liveoaks in their place. And so, as you can see from this image here on the, on the right, the above shows the invasive species in the creek, and you'll notice that there's no water because the invasive species soak up that water. And the goal will be to restore it to more of its natural state that includes water. And with that, we have one more thing we wanted to show, which is on this story map, there is a drone video showing the before, before restoration. And right now, it shows a similar after project, a similar project after restoration. But we're excited about doing some of these things with PAX because it will help when we start putting together some educational opportunities with our campus here that we'll be able to have things like drone footage showing how the site looks currently, and then what the goal is that it will look like after the fact, and I think that's here. So right now, this is further downstream. We've, we've already done some restoration, and you can see the difference where you can see, you know, a river flowing and, and the native species. So, so we, you know, that's kind of the picture. So, so we, you know, that's kind of the picture, high level picture in a nutshell. Like we said, there's many partners that we're working with, CREW, California Conservation Corps, PAX Environmental, Once Upon a Watershed, Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. And this project is getting ready to launch. And the item before you today, like I mentioned earlier, is the approval of one of the larger contracts in the project, which is the Mark Crane's Tree Contract. The contract includes many, or includes the terms that we discussed at the prior city council meeting when we went through the bids that allow the city to have some flexibility and oversight, including penalties and some other things that we discussed at that time. So with that, we are recommending approval of the contract to Crane's Tree for the $265,000.
Okay, any questions of staff? Randy?
Bill had his hand up. You can go first.
Oh, well, wait a minute. I called on you last bill.
That's my, Mike, my only concern, my only concern is the authorizing the Public Works Director to approve change orders in the amount not to exceed 25%. I think I'd rather see that down to 10 or 15%. I don't have a sense that we need to raise the change orders up to 25% of this project. If you did and you added that 25% into his price, he'd be above the, the second guy here in the, in the, the three bids. So I don't have a sense that we need to increase it that much without coming back to council.
Okay, Bill, do you want to, you want to make a motion or what?
Make a motion, Randy?
Yeah, well, I would just move that we authorize the Public Works Director to approve change orders in the amount not to exceed 15%.
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Yes, Susan?
Can, can you explain to me how Mark Crane can do the job? It's $55,000 less, correct?
Yeah, bidding process. He chooses to do it.
And Bill did try to explain it to me via email. My understanding is that they work for the city already and they can do the same quality work as the next highest bidder? Or is there something that's hit, that's, that will come up later that's related to what Randy pointed out?
No, so I, you know, we, we've worked with Cranes in the past. We do have our, our normal bidding, our normal tree program is done through them. I think we have, we increased that this year. I think it was to $120,000, which is the work throughout the city. And we have been happy with the quality of the work they've done. This was done through a separate bid in a bidding process. So that was their, their bid. And we weren't going to argue with them when they came in lower than, than perhaps we expected. But they're, you know, they're aware of the job. They have the same specs everybody else did and they, they bid it lower. So that's to our benefit. And I think to Councilmember Haney's point, the 15% change order, I think that's a good point that we shouldn't assume that the change order would, a large change order on this. And if something does happen, we could always come back to, to council and have that explained clearly before we approved any change. So.
Should be traditional work, right? Okay, Bill, did you get your chance to talk? I don't.
Well, I, I, there's a motion on the table and I, I, I seconded the motion on the floor. I have a question outside of the motion.
Okay.
And so do I, Mayor.
You vote on the motion or is there any objection to the motion? I, I don't see any. Okay, let's go. Okay, next. You have something outside the motion you want to talk about?
Yeah, just a quick question. And this is something that just came up from my, frankly, walking around town and looking at stream courses. There are some tributaries, at least one place. Aralata Creek is a tributary to Stewart Creek. And there is a place just downstream of Aralata Creek in the, from the Episcopal Church, but it looks like there's a big stand of arundo. And has PAX surveyed the tributaries to Stewart Creek to see if there's some arundo issues? Because we certainly don't, that's part of the invasive species. We don't want those rhizomes coming down and basically contaminating our restored habitat. Is that something that we could look at? I'd be happy to show you where this is.
As part of this contract or outside of this contract, Bill?
This would be outside the contract. I'm just, I'm concerned. I'd like to have, I was wondering if it's appropriate to have PAX maybe look at this as part of their overall study of the situation?
Yeah, we should look at it.
Yeah, it's worth looking at. So we can figure out if it's, you know, how we can do that with, whether it's with PAX or, or we can figure that out. But I, with, I think everybody knows, so we've, one of the goals with Major C was to address some of these fire risk issues like arundo. So I think there's, you know, there's.
It's just, I just thought it was appropriate to ask the question.
Yeah, that's really important. Because one of the problems we've had is we've cleared out arundo lower down at the county. And then the people upstream don't do anything and it just, the seed washes down. And the next thing you know, you got the arundo back. So Randy, did you ever have?
It's not seed, it's the rhizomes, but it's the same thing. Was this a prevailing wage bid?
Yes.
So Susan, back to your comment, with a prevailing wage bid, it's, you know, you can sometimes look at bids that come under as, it's just, it's part of doing business is what he pays his employees. But a prevailing wage, he has to pay his employees that prevailing wage. What he, what Mark Crane is saying, that he can do the job in a less amount of time and meet the conditions that are set forth in this contract. I say we give him an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think we want to pay more if we're getting quality work. And so far, the Crane Company has done really good work all over the valley.
If I, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a standard construction contract as amended with the 15% limit on change.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, moving second. Susan, you want to comment?
Yeah, this is a completely separate question. Have we discussed what's going to happen with the trees that are removed? We did get, I don't know if there's other public comments. And I don't know if she, if she sent this into, to, to Louise. But she wrote, this is from Sylvie Lee. She said, there should be coordination around what's, what happens to the trees that are removed because there are many good uses for eucalyptus wood, like benches in the park, tables, artwork, sculptures, edging.
Okay, that's not part of this contract though. So you could refer that to staff.
It's a separate, separate thing.
Yes.
But I mean, but, but, but it is related because when they remove the trees, what are they doing with them?
Yeah, we, we do have a plan and there's a couple of different things. But like, for example, the one, the things that can be mulched, we have a map where we're going to spread, spread the mulch and use it for additional projects. So we have a plan for it. And then we also, the other thing on the big scale project is we also have the five, five-year plan for maintenance of the Stewart projects.
I think, I think what the letter was addressing or questioning is there's some kind of reuse of the timber, for lack of another term. I assume that the contract includes the disposal of the vegetation that's being removed. Is that correct with Mark? He's not going to leave the trunks of the trees or anything.
Right, right. And.
And we don't have a sawmill. So I think whatever, you might make, ask the question of Mark as to, you know, what they plan to do with it. Maybe there's some, you know, somebody here in the valley who wants to take it and recycle it. Yes, Ryan?
Yeah, this is something that has come up a few times in our garden committee meetings. And we made it really clear because there's a number of kind of different moving parts from, from the mulch side for composting to other stuff. We've asked everybody to try and communicate with each other to have any leverage, synergistic uses of any of the stuff that comes out. We know that in composting, due to our direct conversations about it, that invasive species don't work real well in the composting. And since we're taking out invasive species, there's, there's not a lot of composting options for it. But we did make sure to say, hey, mulch, anything else? If there's other creative ideas the, the community has, you know, I, I don't know if there's costs or other problems with it, but we would, you know, we're, we're working hard trying to get everybody communicating to, to, for these exact things, saying, hey, if we're going to pull something out, if there's a more efficient use for it when it comes out, let's make sure we're discussing it for climate park purposes, for other parts of the campus purposes, for anything else, you know, artistic purposes. If there's not other costs or they can come in, I know we're willing to talk with everybody to see if we can help organize that.
But who, like if somebody does make benches and tables, who do they contact?
Again, I, I think James would be the right person to talk to first, James, I think.
And then we'll get them with the right person.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then I, I know I put in the work to make sure we could talk to PAX and CREW and anybody else who, who we can help. And Susan, I'm happy to, you know, put you in touch with the right people too, so we can help make that happen.
Okay, I, I think we should, you know, if, if it's clear that we're going to have or that we likely will have eucalyptus trunks available, then I think it's good to put the word out now before they disappear, you know? Yeah, okay, I'll work on that.
I'm sure Mark is willing, Crane will be happy to leave them there, but.
You know, I think we have to, I think we have to consider the fact that more is more. And when I say that, I mean that Mark has bid this project to perform the work in a certain manner.
Right.
And if we're going to now request him or, or slow the process down because he's got to move, store, cut certain length, or things that I agree with you, Susan, on, but I'm just trying to say that's not how he bid his contract. So I would think working between James and Mark would be the best way for anyone to go to see what the impacts are and how he can recover any costs associated to those impacts.
Yeah, tell the Public Works Director to work with the contractor. And I'm sure the Crane people would be happy to get rid of it. But as Randy says, you don't want to, at least I don't want to see us paying more money for it. I'd rather see them do more work in the restoration project than to be making furniture or whatever.
Yeah, but we, we're going to need benches and tables out there.
Well, I know, but milling them out of eucalyptus is not probably the cheapest way to do that. But anyway, give it to the Public Works Director and have him, tell him to coordinate with the contractor. And the Crane people are probably going to say what Randy said, wait a minute, I didn't bid it that way. I can't, time is money. I got to move. So let them know that it's available, if it's available. Okay. So we got a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion on it? If not, will we, do we need a roll call on this, Matt?
Yeah. Yes, because we're spending 200 and some thousand.
Okay, Gail, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, now we on item number five. James?
Yes.
So item five is placed on the agenda typically for the holidays. We cancel one or, one or two regular meetings to create what we call a winter recess. So this year, this item was placed on so council could discuss. Obviously with the, the current situation with COVID and, and other situations, it's not a typical year. So we wanted, rather than put it on consent with the, you know, with just the recommendation, we wanted to actually talk about it and see what council's decision was on whether to cancel meetings and which meetings in particular. So the three meetings are November 25th, November 24th, December 8th, and December 22nd. Those are the three remaining meetings this year. So we can discuss potentially canceling any of those three.
Mayor, we need an installation date for the new mayor.
Usually December 8th.
And December 22nd. If you'd like to cancel that in my honor, it's my birthday. I will be gone.
I think we should cancel December 22nd. As far as just November 24th, what's on, on the next agenda? Like, what time sensitive stuff do we, do we have? We have the cannabis tax.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's not a, we didn't have anything that couldn't be pushed except if the cannabis tax, if we wanted to talk about that. But we could talk about.
Handle on the 8th, isn't it?
Yeah, we could talk about it on December 8th.
Okay.
Well, as far as I'm concerned on the 24th, guys, we all know we're not going to have Thanksgiving like we've always had it. So the 24th is no different to me than the 10th or any other day. So I have no problems if we want to meet on the 24th. I'll leave, I'll let you guys decide then.
Okay, we have any motion to cancel meetings? As Susan's expressed her interest in getting rid of the 22nd and.
We could do one at a time. Susan, do you want to make a motion on the 22nd and then we take up the other day?
Okay, well, okay, just clarify for me what happens on December, December 8th is when we have a changing of the guard.
That's right.
Out with the old and in with the new.
Yeah, the very old.
It will be, that'll be our reorganization day as well.
Well, since the meeting is held on Zoom, I don't mind meeting on November 24th. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what I want, you know, there, there are loose ends. But if we don't come up with something, can't we still cancel it?
No, you got to do it now. Well, you got to do it now or the 13th. Yeah, you have to do it now. We don't have another meeting.
All right, this is it.
Cancel. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure about November 24th.
Yeah.
If you guys want to be on vacation, I'm fine with that.
I'll just, I'll just tell you, we were trying to keep that meeting light in case it was canceled because it normally is. So we have only right now, we have the coronavirus update, the potentially a cannabis tax discussion. And those are the only two discussion items currently scheduled.
Cannabis you can do on the 13th. Yeah, and I think you've got an announcement probably the, maybe this evening on the cannabis, or not the cannabis, pardon me, the epidemic.
Yeah, yeah. I think tonight will be the, will be the big update. Next, next meeting, I don't expect much change after tonight.
All right, so I'll move that we, that we remove the council's meeting on the 24th and the 22nd.
I'll second that.
And we keep December 8th.
I'll second that.
So, so that, that, tell me again when the tax takes effect?
December 18th is when we expect it to.
Unless we change something on the 8th.
Yeah, okay, so December 8th would be good for that. Okay, all right. Let's cancel November 24th, especially since I didn't get a summer holiday.
And then we will for sure have a timed certain agenda item of cannabis on the 8th then.
Yes.
Okay.
Matt, can this be done by acclimation or do we need a roll call?
Acclimation is fine.
Yeah, okay. Is anybody, as a gift to the staff too, we're going to.
Yes.
Two meetings over the holidays. Okay. Is there any objection?
They act like they're overworked.
They are overworked.
James, you can spend more time with Clifford.
You have marching orders, Mr. City Manager. You have, you got two, two nights off. Okay.
They've earned them.
Yeah, okay. Now we go to the less pleasant part of the agenda, but the important part. Pandemic report?
Yes, let me pull it up. So, you know, I'll just, I had a presentation, but my computer's not cooperating. So I'll just, I'll just verbally give it. The, the big news, I guess I'll get right to it, is that today we were informed by the county that the, the case rate for the county has exceeded the number that would drop the, the county back into the purple or most restrictive tier. That, it's a complicated formula, but it's essentially when the case rate exceeds seven cases per day per 100,000 residents in a county. And so we have now gone to 7.2 cases. And so how this works is after two weeks of exceeding that number, the county would drop to the most restrictive tier or the purple tier. So, so far it has not been two weeks. It's, I think it's been a few days that we've exceeded that number. So we aren't dropping yet, but we're on pace to drop. And I think more concerning, the report from the county is that the trend, you know, is, is actually going up, not down. So essentially, we are all expecting that we will be moving to the purple tier. And let me share my screen. I was able to get my presentation going. So let me back up quickly and just say the, or show real quick that total cases continue to increase about 1,000 every two weeks has kind of been the trend line countywide. Cases in the 93023, we're still doing pretty well overall. Uh, cases in the nine three oh two three, we're still doing pretty well overall, but, uh, they, cases are increasing. We had a hundred and forty eight weeks ago, we have a hundred and fifty seven now. That's total since the beginning, not active, but, but, uh, uh, so nine three oh two three is, has done well. Um, uh, countywide, we have, uh, the hospitalization number going up from twenty seven two weeks ago to thirty five, which is the highest it's been in, in a while. And then in the ICU, the positive news is that number's still going down, so kind of mixed signals there. But at the end of the day, uh, I mentioned before that we had gotten to this, um, red tier, which is four to seven daily new cases, and that allowed things like restaurants, movie theaters, uh, churches to reopen indoor with a reduced twenty five percent capacity. But with the case number today hitting seven point two, we're on pace potentially to move to the purple tier shown here, which then would require restaurants, um, restaurants, uh, churches and, uh, other facilities to close indoor operations again potentially. So it's not good, um, it's not what we were hoping would happen, it's not good news for businesses. So what, uh, we are all trying to do is get the message out to people more than anything, um, that, uh, you know, to be careful, to be diligent. I think a lot of people had gotten the sense that the cases were, were dropping and that things were getting better. Uh, but the, uh, we're putting information out and the county's putting information out aggressively to try to, uh, alert people that if cases continue to rise, businesses will have to close unfortunately. The other interesting thing that came out from the discussion with the county is that, or is that, um, the vast majority of cases right now that they're seeing are actually stemming from private gatherings, not from restaurants. Um, and so obviously the concern is on the horizon, we have, we have Christmas, and those are both times where there are lots of gatherings, so, uh, we're trying to get the word out ahead of time, you know, I've seen this personally where people say, you know, well, it's just a small gathering of, you know, three or four households, it's fine. And, uh, that, that's where they're seeing, you know, when people let their guards down and they end up, um, spreading, uh, COVID. So with that, we wanted to just remind people that the state issued guidelines right now for private gatherings, uh, continue to be in place and those require no more than three households to gather. Um, it, um, they recommend keeping the same households over time and not, you know, meeting three households today and then going to a group tomorrow with three different households. Uh, and, uh, also one point that a lot of people don't realize is that, that according to the state guidelines, they're saying that gatherings should be held outdoors and that, um, practice physical distancing, wearing masks and washing hands. Uh, so, uh, and then the county has, um, asked the cities to remind residents that they can call, especially contract cities like Ojai, that, uh, residents can call Ventura County sheriffs, uh, for, um, for any questions, and there's a number available there, or for any issues, I mean. Uh, but I think one of the other things I wanted to just quickly go over that I think is gonna be, um, concerning for people is if we move back to purple tier, uh, it will impact schools. Essentially what they're saying is that schools that are not open prior to November twenty fourth will not be able to, uh, open. And schools that are open will be able to, to remain open. But, um, obviously the concern there is if a school has not opened yet and they're making plans to open, that may be paused if we move back to purple tier. Um, and so the, the other important factor right now is, uh, the more people get tested, the better, um, for multiple reasons. Um, but it, you know, it also, it, it helps with, uh, the metrics that the state measures, but it also just helps us make sure that our community is safe and that we don't have, uh, you know, unknown super spreaders, uh, in our community. Though, um, the county will continue to do the testing at the super site at the fairgrounds every day. Uh, and, and, uh, we'll need to have the COVID testing at Sazadi Park on Mondays from noon to five. And, uh, that's been extended officially through December twenty eighth, so.
James?
Thank you, James, for getting that.
James, if we go, if we slide up to purple, um, do you, how do you see it impacting the recreation programs and the recreational activities that we've opened up? Um, and then how might it, um, impact Libby?
Yeah, yeah, so if we, um, slide to purple, so we had shown these charts and we were hoping that we're only gonna be moving in this direction, in the positive direction, unfortunately, it looks like we may move this way. But, uh, we don't expect any impact to our recreation programs. We've been very, um, careful and we've done outdoor only recreation programs. Um, and so we wouldn't have to modify that. Uh, if we had gone indoors, we would have to, we would have had to go back to outdoors only. So recreation programs, no impact that we're expecting. Libby Bowl, um, that's gonna continue to be just not usable for public gatherings at this point. Um, we had just about, about two weeks ago, we had talked to the county and the state about, um, possibly easing those guidelines for, um, for gatherings. Uh, and, and, uh, that is not likely to happen at this point with the, um, with the step back to purple tier. So I, I don't expect, I don't expect any change to Libby Bowl, uh, for the next, you know, probably six to eight weeks at this point, if the numbers get back under control.
Yeah, Bill?
Uh, James, is there a, uh, any information as to what's, whether there's a, uh, what the main driver is between general community spread incidents and specific institutional concentration, and do we have any information on that at all?
Well, yeah, what the, what the county reported today, we had a, we had a call at two o'clock today, is that they are saying person to person contact through gatherings is, is what is making up the largest increase at this point.
Is there no hotspots that they are announcing or?
Well, they didn't discuss any, and, uh, the ones that we had been aware of, the, you know, everybody knew the, um, the jails at one point and the, the, uh, farm worker housing at another point, those they've said have, have all started to get under control. So, um, they, their focus today was on the person to person spread through gatherings.
Ryan on the screen, so I, oh, there you are, Ryan, good.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I heard, uh, the number I heard was that like person to person, familial and other gatherings were like over fifty, fifty or over percent. I don't know what the other percentages were, that's an unofficial number, but I heard it from a very good source.
Yeah, we were similar too.
Yeah, it was somewhere like above fifty percent though, with the other categories obviously filling up the rest of fifty percent.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, and one of the points Dr. Levin made on the call today is he said just people, you get comfortable when you're around your family. And, um, you know, the positive is, uh, you know, it's gatherings of three households are allowed, but it's just the reminder is to be very careful and not let your guard down and, you know, and be careful.
Is there anything more on this item?
No, that, that's it, and I, like I said, I don't expect a big change between now and December eighth. I think what we'll probably see is, is, uh, if the numbers continue, we will go back to that tier. And I think the, uh, the message from, that we've been trying to give to local businesses is, is that we still are continuing to do the outdoor business permits, I think we're up to twenty two permits now, I think. And, uh, you know, um, come, come in and if you're a business and you haven't gotten one, come in and get an outdoor permit so that, um, you know, so that you can operate even if, if this does happen. So that's, that's kind of the big message.
Okay, we are to council reports, let's start with Ryan.
Um, I, yeah, the, uh, I just wanna, we, we did some stuff at APC today, but it wasn't super important. I, I will mention that the county, uh, did two interesting things today. They obviously, as everybody's probably aware, they named a bridge after Mr. Bennett. And, uh, they also passed a, uh, health, they announced that there's, they, they passed a resolution stating there's a health crisis in Ventura County regarding racism and that they're using that to help encourage a number of their things they're already doing regarding synergy with the police departments and the various organizations throughout the community. So just want to make everybody aware of that.
Okay, uh, Susan, do you have a report of any sort?
Oh, I just want to encourage people to go see Kiss the Ground this Saturday at Nordoff. Yeah. Was produced only a mile away from Nordoff. So, I mean, the filmmakers live and work, um, a, a mile away from Nordoff. So, and that will be at six thirty, it's free. And, um, Betsy Sticks and I will say a couple of words about why, uh, regenerative agriculture is important to the Ojai Valley. Um, and it's a, it'll be an interesting evening, I think. Yeah, the, 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 there's gonna be question and answers with the directors, the film team, and there's gonna be gift bags and special surprises.
So this is supposed to be a drive-in movie, right?
It's a drive-in movie.
How are they gonna do all that other stuff? I, I hope they're being careful, okay?
Yes, it says, uh, watch inside your car or bring chairs, blankets and snacks. Car safely spaced, listen in your car or portable FM radio, masks required at all times when outside vehicles, I mean, they're assuming that in the vehicle will be your, your family, you know, or people that you're. Or group, yes, they're very aware of the, of the COVID restrictions.
You have, you have anything for us?
Uh, no, except I, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, uh, with due recognition of Pearl Harvey Day, that there's nothing, uh, ironic or metaphorical of being the same day we're kicking off demonstration project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Could be an unfortunate coincidence, couldn't it? Uh, Randy?
You know, it's, 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 uh, it's all in the, you know, I plan on, uh, the people I've talked to about going to this event at Nordoff are all gonna be, bring a bag of dirt. Um, just joking, Susan, the, um, the interesting thing is though, I did watch that film and I was very, very impressed with it. Um, I'm not sure, uh, how we can, um, utilize a lot of the information that they gave and, and how they do it in, um, this community where our crop isn't a rotational crop. Um, so to me, um, I, I've talked to Bill about this in great length is, um, I would like to see how we can find someone in this community that's got a large citrus farm that would like to, to work with this group and figure out how to do it, how to utilize the soils under these citrus and fruit trees to the betterment of the community and of the world. So, um, I'm open for, I would just like to see it how, I'd like to see how it could be utilized within our community. Um, so I thought it was a great film, a really good film.
Can I add something to that, Mayor?
Yeah, I want to respond.
And I, I would just like to really, um, I, I agree, uh, it's not a lot of times that it's saying, you know, viewing something exceeds expectations, but it, it's really, it's really interesting, especially from a practitioner standpoint, being a more big part of the narration. But I also wanted to add that I really think Edinburgh's A Life on This Planet, on, on the issue of, of, uh, human impact on biodiversity is a great pairing with this film.
Yeah.
Very good. Susan, you had something you want to say?
Randy, I believe there is a farm on Farm Road. I visited about maybe just before COVID, yeah, at the beginning of the year, there's a farm that is doing regenerative, it's a citrus farm, I mean, it's a citrus orchard where they're doing regenerative agriculture, I think there are some, and that, I think that might not be the only one where they're.
I, I think they need to get that information out and, uh, so that some of us can go see it. Again, um, the film to me was more about rotational crops and being able to rest acreage and allow it to rejuvenate and, and, um, other sound, um, mechanical and environmental, environmental practices on that soil. Um, I'm just not sure how it equates to how we farm, um, under our citrus and in our, and in our valley. So I'd be open to it though, I, I thought it was an excellent, excellent film.
Okay, well, that was the only thing, I was, I was gonna add the same thing, I read the book, now I'm looking forward to the film. I, I think doesn't Josh, uh, Josh has a, has a little orchard or something down on his property?
I think so, but the whole point is to teach, uh, people that are, you know, these monoculture orchards, they can't continue this way and agriculture is super important to our valley. So the point is to help the local, local ranchers transition, that is the point, yeah. And that's, that's so critical for the future of Ojai.
Mr. City Manager, you have a report for us or you've already exhausted yourself?
Uh, I have, um, uh, two quick ones if I may. Um, Mayor Johnston, you mentioned this, uh, earlier, but the, um, the flag, uh, ceremony today. Uh, and I just wanted to give some credit, I know you mentioned Captain Fryhoff got it started, uh, and, uh, it was good to see him there. Uh, but Captain Rivera, I think, finished it off, so I want to give him a little bit of credit.
I apologize for having that, not mentioned that part.
So, uh, but it was, it was a nice ceremony and then people were there socially distanced with face coverings, as people could see, and they, they did the full honor guard ceremony, so that was cool to see today. And then just the other thing is some credit to the Arts Commission who has done the, um, utility box project. And I don't think until you see it, do you realize like how, how dreary they looked beforehand? This is the one to me, that these boxes were eyesores for, for ever and, uh, they're pretty, like, you know, they're works of art now, and, uh, so they have done, uh, I think it's four boxes total at three sites. Um, and then here's another one, and, uh, and those, those are now painted and people can start to, uh, check those out to at Libby Park, and then this one's on Ventura Streets.
Are those covered with some kind of a, uh?
Anti-creed coating.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, they are.
I have a question of James related to this, James, when is the mural ordinance coming back?
So, uh, we don't have the November twenty fourth meeting, and so I was, uh, I think it will probably be at that December or January meeting most likely, of course, in, in consultation with the, with the mayor, so.
Not this mayor. Okay, um, so any other future items anybody wants to bring up tonight? Hard to get them on, but, uh.
Yeah.
But I wanna, I wanna make sure I just remind everybody real quick that, uh, there's gonna be on the show First Look, which is after Saturday Night Live, Pax Crew, Ojai Land Conservancy, Once Upon a Watershed and some other groups were involved with, uh, the guy who, uh, is the host of that, Johnny Bananas, which I've watched a couple of times. I don't remember what date it's coming out, but if you have a chance, so you can record it, make sure you record it. Our own Ojai crew is gonna be on the City Hall property, apparently it went really well, so I can't wait to see it.
Did you see Johnny Bananas?
That's it, that's the host name, is Johnny Banana, it's, it's a really funny, he's really hilarious. Um, it, it's a great show, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Did he interview Skip?
I thought that was Phil's nickname for me.
With all these fabulous, uh, creative talent we have, we gonna start, start worrying about attracting too much attention to Ojai again? You know, globally?
Apparently that's too late, when you look at how fast this town filled up again last weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, just marmal, in fact, Saturday, Sunday night, I was walking, walking the streets again after dark and I think there were half a dozen restaurants downtown, you know, that, that were all fairly busy considering that they only could take fifty percent, I think. Is that, is that the guideline right now?
Actually twenty five percent.
Twenty five percent, okay, they were full, I think, so.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm always struck by the number of people just walking around, I introduce myself there, we'll talk and I'll ask where they're from and, and, um, they just go, they just, they just come to be here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, guys, well, that brings us to the conclusion, so, uh, everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. We don't see each other before then, so.
Wait, 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 before you do the gavel, what, how do we swear in the new mayor on, on December eighth?
We will work that out and we, we know how to do, the clerk will do it.
But, but, uh, okay, well, I guess I can talk to them about, I have a plan.
Okay.
I'll talk to him. So, just on Zoom, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that the clerk and the city manager will be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay, adjourned, thank you all.